Good evening, how's everyone this evening?
Awesome.
Good.[130.29][130.29](Laughter).[131.29][131.29](Laughter). I would like to call the Peoria Public School District 150 Board of Education meeting for February 22nd, 2016 to order. Madam Secretary, will you please call a roll?
Mrs. Butler, here. Mr. Lloyd. Mrs. Kostick.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is everybody in? Before we get started with our business this evening, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Since we last had our board meeting, we've had some deaths in our family, in our District 150 family. Mr. Ron Saul, who's in the maintenance department, and Ms. Ebony Lobdell, who is the sister of Renee Lobdell at Tree Win.
And a parent.
And, I'm sorry.
Parent of a Williams student. She was a parent.
Yes, she's one of our parents as well. So if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first thing on our agenda this evening is the community recognition. And that is my part here. Tonight, our Community Contribution Award recognizes Bradley University Athletic Director, Dr. Chris Reynolds and his team. Mr. Reynolds is a native of Peoria and a 1989 graduate of Peoria High, where he was a two-time All-State player, a Parade All-American, and led the Lions to a runner-up finish in 1989 at the IHSA AAA Tournament. I'm sorry. And he was inducted into the Greater Peoria Sports Hall of Fame in 2004. Dr. Reynolds and Bradley Braves have been strong supporters of Peoria Public Schools' efforts this year to boost attendance by rewarding students with two absences, or fewer, for the semester with two tickets vouchers during the holiday break. In this semester, 5,302 Peoria Public School students had two or more fewer absences, and more than 1,500 students had perfect attendance. Dr. Reynolds has also served as an outstanding role model for our students by generously giving his time to speak to classes and school assemblies. He will be the keynote speaker this Thursday at the Peoria High School Black History Month Celebration. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Chris Reynolds.[348.78][348.78](Applause). Dr. Reynolds, would you like to make a few remarks?
I will, and also I had--
I messed up your introduction, bud.[367.72][367.72](Laughter).
No, you're fine. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm here with our Director of Marketing, Brooke Buzard, and it's an honor to be able to be here and be recognized in this manner. When I first started, one of the things I wanted to do is to give back to this community. I'm a product of Pure Illinois, a proud 1985 graduate of Laux Elementary School, as well as a graduate of Pure High School in 1989. And so being born and raised here, something that was near and dear to my heart are the young people in District 150. And being able to do everything that I can do in my role of Director of Athletics at Bradley University to help ensure that our young people are attending classes, because what I found in my journey is that 90% of life is just showing up. And so we can incentivize our young people just to be there every single day. I want to do everything within my power to do that. And so giving back to the community is a mission of the university, particularly the Athletics Department, and it's something that we will continue to do. And so I also want to tip my hat to Dr. Karat, her strong leadership. She's also a Bradley University graduate, and so I quickly wanted to connect with her in terms of addressing some of the needs that I saw in the community as well. And so I want Brooke to just talk briefly just about some of the things that we did.
Thank you.
So you touched on a lot of them, the vouchers and providing all of the students in District 150 who had two or fewer absences, the opportunity not just for them to come to a men's basketball game free, but also a parent or sibling, we thought was really important, because definitely it kind of, you know, takes a village to raise a child, and we wanted to help reward the parents and the people that are behind them as well. And we were also really proud that during the games, we had a moment where any student in attendance who was part of the program could stand and be recognized. And we also were able to feature these great videos that Chris Copeland and his team helped put together, kind of showcasing the wonderful staff and teachers from around the district. So I was really just proud and excited to be able to serve as a platform for you all to help reach the community, and thank you so much for considering us and approaching us with a great partnership.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has the token of our appreciation for your contributions to the students and families of District 150.[522.66][522.66](Applause).
President Ross on board, I just wanted to show when Dr. Reynolds came to Bradley. He brought his team, and we met here in this building, and one of the things he said is, "We don't want to just hang out on the hilltop. We'd like to immerse ourselves in the community." And in addition to the things they mentioned, Dr. Reynolds also served as our keynote speaker of Back to School, Welcoming Faculty. That was a really big hit. He was very popular. I loved the message in terms of giving that extra effort. It reminded me of the 212 degrees and going above and beyond, so that was a really big hit. Then also the athletes are in our schools. There, I know the basketball players, the soccer players, and various athletes from Bradley collaborating with various buildings, and the kids are very, very excited, especially in color days. So that's really, really good. So we do want to continue a relationship with Bradley University and Dr. Reynolds and his team, and we're looking forward to, for the partnership. So thanks again, our friends from Bradley, Dr. Reynolds and your team, thank you.[600.32][600.32](Applause).
Now, I believe we have some announcements. Mr. Adler?
In February, 82 parents and 51 students attended Parent University at Charter Oak Primary School. Thank you to Principal Zolkowski and Charter Oak staff and students for hosting the event. The next Parent University will be Thursday, March 17th, at Roosevelt Magnet School, entitled "Artful Infusion." The March Parent University will present arts education as an integral concept of a strong academic program. So Principal Doug Atkins is here to tell us a little bit more about the Artful Infusion. And I didn't give him enough notice to get up to the podium at that.[651.16][651.16](Laughter).
Guess we have some more seats down front, if you'd like to come down.
Thank you, Board Member Adler, Dr. Karat, President Ross, and Board Members for inviting us here to tell you about Artful Infusion, the March 17 Parent University at Roosevelt Magnet School. A growing body of research presents compelling evidence that connects student learning in the arts to a wide spectrum of academic and social benefits. Arts education helps students master other subjects including math, reading, and social studies. Research shows that students engaged in the arts-infused instruction demonstrate improved cognition and self-discipline, which extends to greater success in other academic areas.
At Artful Infusion, Roosevelt will open its classroom doors to demonstrate how we integrate art into core curriculum and how our students benefit from inquiry-based, hands-on learning experiences. Workshops will include Math Made Fun, which uses math skills in the kitchen to create Play-Doh; in science, through the senses, participants will create a sensory bottle to use for cooldown techniques for troubled behavior; and Sticks and Stones is a session that aims to reduce bullying by infusing relationships with self and others with compassion, empowerment, and love. Local artist Ryan Reed will lead a session for parents on fun painting projects to do at home to enrich parent-child bonds and develop creativity. Pam O'Rear will have an informational session on the Lion King Experience here in Peoria. And finally, we will give parents in the community information on Roosevelt's return to a Magnet School status. Parent University will include dinner and structured childcare for grades K-4, including face painting, a bouncy house, Reader's Theater, a petting zoo, and much more. Please join us on March 17th for Artful Infusion at Roosevelt Magnet School.
Thank you.[765.19][765.19](Applause). Other announcements?
Yes.
Mrs. Butler?
Thank you. This week, a number of District 150 schools will observe Black History Month. As mentioned previously, Dr. Chris Reynolds will be the keynote speaker on Thursday at Peoria High School. Other speakers at Peoria High School will be WMBD reporter Eugene Daniel and Judge Alicia Washington. Students will perform in a living history museum, including a reenactment of Rosa Parks' Bus Sit-In, which will take place on a metro, on a retro city-linked bus on the school parking lot. The Richwoods High School Annual Black History Month Assembly will be held on Friday, February 26th, at 8:23 a.m. and 9:07 a.m., featuring student performances in speech, choir, dance, and more. Lincoln K-8 Black History Month Celebration will be on Thursday. It will feature two choirs, a jazz band, the school dance and step teams, and a catered soul food dinner. Manuel Academy's Black History Month Program, also on Thursday, February 25th at 5:30 p.m., will feature spoken word, music, and dance performances by students. On Monday, February 29th, Franklin Primary School's Black History Month Program from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. will feature a performance and presentation by nationally-renowned jazz vocalist Samantha McCord, a faculty member of Carl Sandberg College and Knox College. Other entertainment will include Franklin Step Team and a traditional African dance troupe. Franklin Primary School's Black History Month Celebration is sponsored by the Peoria Police Department.
Thank you. Other announcements? Ms. Jackson?
Yes. Congratulations to the Manuel Academy RoboRams teams, 8648 and 9788, for advancing to the First Tech Challenge FTC Illinois State Championship after competing in the FTC Qualifying Tournament in Decatur. The highly competitive Decatur Tournament featured 27 teams. The FTC State Championship is being held on February 26th and 27th, 2016, at Elgin Community College. There, they will compete against 37 other teams in the state. Staff from Caterpillar Advanced Components and Systems Division, including Jose William Washington, I'm sorry, Jeffrey Oklu, Ronald Gels, Miosha Zavak volunteered to coach the 11 students on the team in their free time. So let's give the Manuel Academy RoboRams a hearty hand clap.[957.93][957.93](Laughter) And wish them well in their endeavor. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes. Congratulations to Manuel, Peoria High, Richwoods Speech Teams, who all represent Peoria High, Peoria Schools at the state meet this past weekend. We're still waiting to hear the final results from each team's coach. We will share that information in remarkable times. However, we do know Richwoods has, was recognized for being a team academic achievement winner. Only 24 schools in the state got that honor. We got a lot going on in District 150.[1004.51][1004.51](Applause).
Mrs. Wolfmeyer, did you have anything? No? Dr. Karat, you have an announcement?
My announcement has to do with the Five Essential Survey, and that's actually for parents. It's a survey that allows parents to share their thoughts with us regarding important elements of school effectiveness. And the results, it's actually tied with our strategic plan scorecard over the next five years, and also those results are listed on Illinois State Board of Education, that report card piece. That's a component of that. So the announcement is to encourage our parents to get online, please, visit our district website, and we would love to get your feedback so that we can continue to improve for the better. A lot of you have done it. We're looking for a minimum of 20% for each building. Our kids are taking it, teachers are taking it, so we would love to hear from our families. So parents, please get online and share your thoughts with us so we can continue to make things better for our kids. Thank you.
Is there a deadline, Dr. Karat?
Actually, yes, Ms. Ross.
We did talk about that.
Through March 11th.
March 11th.
So we have some time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
District presentations, the first one is WCTC Culinary Arts.
Can you tell me how the food was?
This group just prepared our dinner for the board meeting. I'm sorry.
Oh, she has, she has a spirit.
Oh, you have a spirit. Somebody should say that.[1114.13][1114.13](Laughter).
Ten Woodruff Career and Technical Center Culinary Art Students, representing Richwoods High School, Manuel Academy, Peoria High School, and the Knoxville Center for Student Success, traveled to McCormick Place in Chicago on Saturday, February 6th, to compete in Pro Start, a restaurant management and culinary competition sponsored by the Illinois Restaurant Association Educational Foundation. Of 18 teams competing, the WCTC Restaurant Manager Team placed fourth, and the Culinary Team placed seventh in the state. Congratulations.[1161.13][1161.13](Applause). Congratulations. Tonight, as Ms. Ross began to say, the team cooked the Board of Education's dinner, and it was to die for.
Wonderful. We ate it all. There was not an empty plate.
It was not an empty plate. It was delicious. We appreciated these students sharing with us. I'd like to introduce WCTC Culinary Arts Teacher--
Ms. Yeti.
Ms. Yeti.
Ms. Yeti.
Ms. Yeti.
Ms. Yeti.
Ms. Yeti.
Yeti?
Good enough.
Okay, thank you.[1200.24][1200.24](Laughter). Sodexo General Manager Mark Streamer and Team Mentor, Chef, Mark Schupman, to share more about the competition and the Woodruff program. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So I'm a little bit shy, not usually, but I'll do my best. So actually, the team that prepared for you guys earlier was our culinary team, and who you see behind me right now is our management team. We actually got our judges cards back today, and they were only half a point away from third place, and only four points away from first place in the state. So there are four points to it.[1250.13][1250.13](Laughter) So what the judges really liked about our school, and just to let everybody know, there's actually 62 schools in the state that offer the Pro Start program, which is a recognized program through the National Restaurant Association, certified program as well, two years. So out of the 62, only 18 schools actually made it there. There was a huge effort that needed to be made in order to make it that far. You guys have been able to read through the 22-page written proposal they had to write first, okay? They had to make, create a PowerPoint presentation alongside it, and they had to do costing, menu costing, and they had to have pictures of all the food they were going to make. So just making it there was a fantastic effort. When they were, just for making it to the team, they actually all received scholarships, $10,000 for a four-year scholarship because they played so well.[1323.83][1323.83](Applause). Because they played so well, they actually were approached by several recruiters and got additional scholarships for culinary colleges throughout the state and throughout the country. So it was really an amazing experience. So hopefully, we'll be able to do it better next year, and we'll come back with a huge trophy. Okay, that is our goal, and we'll be able to represent at Nationals. I just wanted to let those guys, if you guys, a little bit of a taste of how their presentation went, and they also would like to give a couple of words about the program. So we hope to keep your continuous support for all the wonderful programs at Woodruff, not just food. We do all kinds of stuff here. You can get your car fixed, I mean, you know, we're the whole deal, so please come see us. All right.
I'm sorry. I'm not going to blink it. I know how to do this.[1382.41][1382.41](Laughter).
Hi, good evening, afternoon, whichever one. My name is Watika Sledge, and I was the General Manager for our restaurant, The Roaming Bear. Hi, my name is Simone Holmes, and I was the maître d' of our restaurant.
Hi, my name's Austin Irving III, and I was Executive Chef of our restaurant.
Hi, my name is Asha Birch, and I was the Sales and Marketing Director.
Okay.[1415.01][1415.01](Laughter) Our restaurant, The Roaming Bear, was ideally a high-quality, rustic, and sustainable restaurant. The whole competition was a very, very good experience to me, and I think to all of us. It was something really good to like, help us, you know, put ourselves out there, you know? Some of us, not all of us, you know, were as outgoing as other people, so it was kind of a good experience to be able to like, talk in front of people and to gain like, skills on how to talk in front of people, you know? Like, it was just really fun. It was really fun. I liked it. I liked it a lot. And next year, we're most definitely going to go to Nationals, because we were really close this year, and it was our first year doing it, going against, you know, schools that have been doing it for years, so I'm really proud of us. It was really fun, but--[1467.30][1467.30](Applause).
Well, we got our theme from like, what would a roaming bear find in the wild? So we came up with a lot of creative ideas, which seafood was one of the main things. Our restaurant had a lot of salmon on it and shrimp, because that's what bears like. And, yeah. And this is my second year at Woodruff. I wish I'd done it la, I wish like, we did this Pro Start thing last year, but we wasn't, Ms. Yeti said we wasn't ready. Okay, come on, look at us now. Anyway, yeah, and the experience was great. I had a lot of fun. Have you guys ever heard of the Warrior Cafe? Warrior Way Cafe? You guys should come. Thursdays, $5 for a huge meal. You get an appetizer, entree, good entree, and a dessert. This week, you want to do it? Okay, Watika want to do it? I just want to say Ms. Yeti is a great mentor. She works hard with us. She shows us how the kitchen will be, and I'm glad to have her as my mentor. Thank you.[1545.58][1545.58](Applause).
Well, this week for our restaurant, we open at 11 o'clock in the morning, and we don't close until 1:15, so you all have time to come get you a plate. It's $5. You get a good meal. This week, this week, we are having tomato soup, or you can get a house salad, and for the entree, it is a pork goulash, so it's like a pork tenderloin with some other stuff mixed in there.[1577.83][1577.83](Laughter). And for dessert, it's key lime pie. So, you know, just stop by, say, "Hey, how are you?" Grab a plate, and then go back to work, you know? Yeah.
You want to join? Simone, you want to say something?
All right, so thank you very much. One more thing I would like to say while we have everybody here, we had tremendous support from the community. Sodexo, that is the managing company that does all the cafeterias here, they not only helped us get all the paperwork together, and Mr. Streamer actually came in twice a week to help these kids, you know, stay on track and get their numbers right. We also had one of our teachers help us out, Mr. Brandon Oliger. He is the English teacher. He also taught drama, so he gave them a lot of tips on how to pass the microphone, how to talk into it, which clearly, you know, I did not pay that much attention to.[1637.63][1637.63](Laughter). And then we had Chef Schupman. He's with Living Wealth Show. He's the executive chef, and he helped our culinary team just, you know, tips on how to compete at a culinary competition. And we had several community sponsors that helped us out with, you know, donations. We had Dixon's giving us a great deal on salmon. These guys, they had to not only cook food, they also, if they wanted to use salmon, they had to fillet the whole thing. If they wanted to use chicken, they had to butcher it, you know? I mean, it was everything. Everything was included. So I just wanted to say thank you so much, especially Mr. Streamer and Sodexo. You guys are awesome. Thank you.[1684.91][1684.91](Applause).
Mr. Streamer, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, it's not about me, it was about these kids.
Thank you. Thank you so much.[1698.33][1698.33](Applause). Okay, next on the agenda is the Elite Update. Mr. Tannis?[1711.13][1711.13](Laughter).
Oh, yeah. You know I've been hoping on to that.
What's your name?
I can't go any longer. Thank you, President Ross. But for these students right here, I gotta go there. I say oh, you say oh! Yeah, oh! Oh! Yeah! I couldn't help but cheer them. God bless you.[1731.13][1731.13](Applause). President Ross, Board Members, Dr. Karat, staff, and community, it's an honor today to present the Elite Update on the occurrence of what's going on in all of our schools. To do this, we're going to use PowerPoint to try to share as best we can where we are. So year-long programming, school-wide, at both Lincoln and Harrison. Next slide, please. Elite, we've put together a customized curriculum. As you can see, eight hours of staff training, professional development. Currently, we have a five-member team at Harrison and a three-member team at, excuse me, five-member team at Lincoln and a three-member team at Harrison. Currently, we have a five-member team at Harrison and a three-member team at, excuse me, five-member team at Lincoln and a three-member team at Harrison. Our performance impact, ABCs, course passage, behavior and attendance. We're working with soft skills, character building and parent involvement. One unique concept that has been developed over this last few weeks is the new school within a school concept at both Lincoln and Harrison. The best way for me to illustrate this concept is play a little video that we did that tells you how this all came about.
Yeah, about one bad apple being able to spoil the whole bunch. But it's true, especially in a classroom, when misbehaving, disreputable, can bring down the test scores for an entire classroom. Well, Elite is going after that bad apple in a big way with the concept called School Within A School.
School Within A School came about because of our concern for the large group of students that are being the most destructive in the classroom. It was looking at who could, if we took this group out, how would the rest of the group grow and be able to do their best? School Within A School is set up in a totally separate classroom that is opposite end of the building from our regular middle school. So they come in at different interests and leave through a different entrance every day. We met with one parent and she agreed that since her child had been in School Within A School, she'd see great improvements not only with them in school, but things at home as well, with the respect at home. The teachers have had wonderful reactions and it's been a joy to see them come to us and express how excited they are with what their classroom is like right now with the distractions being induced.
Since our disruptive students have been removed from the classroom, my classroom has been less calm and students are less more focused and we have gained a tremendous amount of teaching time back into the classroom. I think before School Within A School, a lot of my students were constantly distracted but also feeling intimidated. Now, the atmosphere in my classroom is calm, students in a focused atmosphere.
Let's say a quick word, it's been a smaller than what it used to be. The apple damage, uh, school being in school actually works.
Collectively, they've come together really as a family and to me, it's really exciting to see the kids working with each other, helping each other, encouraging each other, and I think that's been really amazing. The district's greatest hope with School Within A School is to provide options. We realize and we understand that one size does not fill all, see the circumstances. We're dealing with the data, the weekly data regarding attendance, regarding course passing, regarding behavior, and wow, what a huge difference.
Some students learn and they're feeling positive, so because of discipline, we have a chance to change and support those alternative behaviors.
Leading to the flag of the United States of America.
Really, they're going that bad apple, 'cause it can change. It can become a good apple. And with School Within A School, when that happens, that apple can rejoin the rest of the world.
We're pretty proud and that all sounds, except for me, it looked pretty good too. But you want data, you want proof. I mean, proof is in the pudding, so the next speakers, our leaders, our bosses, led by Ms. Gillis first, will give you that data.
Good evening. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. We're gonna start here with Harrison's data. We had 11 of our 15 students improve in reading. We had actually 18 students total, but some did not get to take the test before or after like, fall or winter, so we didn't have actual scores for everyone, but 11 out of 15 showed improvement. I think an important piece that the slide doesn't show that I wanted to share with you is the students we chose at Harrison are much different than how they chose at Lincoln. Ours are a very wide range of abilities. We have sixth, seventh and eighth graders, but we also included students with IEPs and our English Language Learners as well. So our students were our very high flyers, if you wanna say. They had the most referrals, we looked at their attendance, they had the lowest or the biggest issues with attendance, so we had a lot of components we looked at on who we picked, but they were pretty much our top group. And Ms. Riley, God bless her, took on this group, and it is a strong bunch of kids because they were our biggest high flyers and ability-wise, also very low. So she's had a big challenge, so the data, I think this is one snapshot is all, I just wanna say that, it's one snapshot, so you gotta remember, there's a lot of other things that we look at too, and all their attendance is improving and their behavior is improving. In our, in this group, we have students, there's only one that's on grade level and the rest are anywhere from four to five grade levels below. So she has her hands full with this group and does a great job. The next slide shows the math. Nine out of 14 improved on their math, so again, you know, they're showing that improvement. And then you also have the issues of those students, depending on if they are good test takers or not, or if they were not feeling well that day, that affects data as well. The next slide is the biggest one, that's made the huge impact across the entire building, and this is our disciplinary referrals. The eighth grade went down by 5%. Seventh grade went down by 10, and it was the sixth grade that we had the biggest impact and it went down by 64, and that was because the bulk of the students we had were sixth graders in the program. We had eight sixth graders and then five seventh and five eighth. So we had a large group that came from sixth grade. The 30% reduction at the end, that was for middle school altogether. From the start of the program, we showed a 30% drop in referrals altogether when you looked at the rest of the building and the difference it made. The students, some of them came in with like, 29 referrals before the program and since then, they've had maybe two. There's other ones that came in with 19 and they've had one since then. So the students that are in there are showing huge gains as well with their referrals as well, so. So that's Harrison and Mr. Blutner, or do you want Mrs. Riley though?
Yeah, Mrs. Riley.
All right. We'll have Mrs. Riley from Harrison come up and talk about our group. Come on up.
Longtime listener, first-time caller. I'm here to say thanks, really. It's really refreshing to be able to have teachers, once again, collaborate with Wisconsin Avenue and our own administrators to put something in place that benefits everybody, so really, a thank you to you guys very much. You've heard about the data and you're gonna hear more about the data. I wanna talk about the intangibles, which you're not gonna see on the slide. The idea of a kid coming to school, maybe getting some traction, never had much success. We're talking about sixth, seventh and eighth graders, the ones we term high flyers, the ones that are really non-traditional students that have been expected year after year to comply. I always called it pounding round pegs into square holes that just, we were just butting our heads, so once again, I think a big hats off to you guys for trying that. Another intangible is kids that hated school, maybe are gonna come, they're gonna learn one way or the other, they'll learn that there are different ways to handle situations and it's much, it goes much deeper than academics. I mean, I, in my heart of hearts, I think we're talking about maybe saving lives here because the first reaction does not have to be anger and violence, that we're teaching them that there are different skills that will help them get what they want in an appropriate way, and maybe they've never had the opportunity to have those skills taught to them before. So that's an intangible, that's not anything that you're gonna see in any kind of a slide. We've garnered a lot of community support. We've had a former Harrison student who is now a U.S. Marine Major who stops by. We've had Caterpillar executives stopped by, we've had Mr. Jim Lewis stopped by, Secretary of State, not Secretary of State, State's Attorney stopped by. Our own Teacher of the Year, Kim Thomas, has come to our room, so Big Dad, BigDad.org, if you wanna look into that, he's right across the street from us, he knows the kids outside of school, he's out forever checking on them, just to see how things are going. So we've got, Mr. Bryson is coming with a character development component. So we've, in the short time since November 30th, I think we've really implemented some things that we're praying will do what's best for these kids that just have not felt much success. It can be trying at times. The other thing I wanna let you know is, I would not step foot in that room if it was not for Elite. First of all, it would not have happened had it not been for Elite, but the team that works, Ms. Trina Funches and Cody Randall are... I would not step foot in the room without them. Their ability to be proactive and stop a problem while I continue, that is immeasurable. To stop things first, talk it through, again, I cannot say enough about Elite and anybody that knows me knows that at the beginning, I had my doubts about Elite, but I wanna tell you, they're there the first day of school and they're there the last day of school and they're there every day in between. Every minute of every day, they're there and giving us the support that we need. I also wanna say our middle school team, any kind of materials I need, any kind of support, any kind of background. So the support we've gotten has really been great. And the last thing I just wanna say is that, I hope you look at it like I do, that it's really a win-win-win, win-win-win-win. If you're talking about the students in the classroom, maybe getting some skills that they didn't have. The kids that are not in my room but are out with these folks have the opportunity, they have the skills that they need, the social-emotional skills, so they're ready to go. They don't need what I'm teaching. So they get the opportunity to have some very good teachers do things with them that they were unable to do before, so it's a win for that. It's a win for our administrators, who have to spend less time on discipline referrals and dealing with that kinda thing. You guys know as well as I do that you're gonna be facing teacher shortages very soon. We have teachers that are not nearly as burned out, that aren't feeling like that that's gonna be their last day and they can't possibly go back because they can't do what they need to do in a classroom. So I believe that, I believe wholeheartedly in this program and I just wanted to say thank you guys. I really appreciate it.
First of all, can we recognize this sea of blue that is here from Lincoln? This is our staff. They came... Everybody in a blue shirt, Lincoln staff. I think the best place to start is, you want data, my favorite piece of data actually came early on when Ms. Coconati, is she here? There you are, right there. I don't know if you remember this, it was one of our first ULT meetings and she was looking at referrals. And she said that 13% of our students, and this was, again, early in the year, had two or more, I think I have that right, two or more referrals. That means 87% of our students had either zero or one. And as a new principal, maybe a month in, and we were scrambling around trying to get Lincoln in the right place, I thought, "Well, we gotta change this. 87% of our students, we're spending almost 100% of our time on those 13%." And so, with Elite, this is, I think this is really important, you know, I'm a grizzled veteran, I've been around a long time, and I've never seen a school turn so quickly and it's large part because Dr. Karat and Ms. Stockman and Ms. Johnson all supported what we were trying to do. Instead of saying no to things that were a little bit different, they said yes. And then we sort of figured it out as we went along. So the data that you're going to see, that, to me, is that 87% were making a normal middle school now. They're, were able to do dances and were able to do sports and recognize all the positive things that are happening at school, and I don't know if that happened before, so again, Elite's impact, school-wide, is just amazing. Now, the, our data here, the specific data for the School Within A School, you know, as we were, I'll go off again a little bit. As, as we were, you can read that graph, I mean, look at all that. 12 out of 15 students approved reading and look at those big blue graphs at the end, look at that percentage. Those are amazing. I do wanna say that we were very careful and collaborative with central administration, with Elite, with my great administrative staff in building that classroom to succeed. And so, it's a little different than what Harrison, we sort of pieced it together. We have some high flyers in there, but we also had students who were just not passing. I think that most of the students in that classroom, in our School Within A School, have never had any real stretch of success. I mean, that's, that's our failure, that we have sixth, seventh and eighth graders who have never had any stretch of success. So there it is. That's two months roughly of work. And these kids love coming to school. We, when I say we built the room carefully by, with the students, with the Elite staff and, and again, talking, we needed a teacher. And so we're sitting around a table thinking, "Okay, excuse me, who do you know that would be crazy enough..." "...to come into a classroom with 15 tough kids?" And in unison, we all said, "Hattie Elliot Gardner." I mean, it was, there was no doubt. She is crazy, but she's also, she's passionate, she is just a fierce advocate for students and just like the rest of my staff here, it all pivots on the person that's leading that classroom, it pivots on that teacher and then we sort of fill in. So it has been, it's been a wonderful collaboration and a successful, excuse me, successful collaboration. So why don't we go into the next slide? And there's our math improvement. Again, I can't stress enough that these students haven't been successful, they just don't, they just haven't made it in the traditional classroom. You'll also notice that there's red in that previous slide, there were a couple bars that had dropped, there's a bar there that had dropped. I think we have to be careful measuring success strictly on something like this. If you look at their grades and you look at their attendance, there are two more measures in which everybody in that classroom has succeeded. So it is about that. Don't just look at these, although those are wonderful. We have grade attendance data coming out of that room and we have people who went into that room failing that grade level. They weren't gonna pass. Excuse me, man, they're all passing now. So, I don't know, do I have the next slide? Okay, sorry, yeah, thank you, Dr. Karat, I know. I am not, I am not crying, people think I'm crying. Although the evening's not over. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so this slide talks about, just 7th grade, and our referrals, let me get to that because I'll break that down a little bit for you. Obviously, this is, these are the students, this is the general population in 7th grade, so we've, we've pulled out the 7th grade, they're in this room, and the difference between, from August to November, we had 525 referrals in 7th grade. Yes, that's, that's a lot. After that, December, January, and February, so it's roughly three months, there were six in August, but, you know, we just throw those in with September, 334. That is a drop of 191 referrals, and is... As, as a, as a grizzled veteran who, and I've been in many schools, Elite sort of is the, you could almost consider them the first responders. They're in there, they're building relationships with the students, so when there's an issue, they're the first ones there, getting them back in the classroom as quickly as we can. With, with that, 191 less, and teachers are just able to teach, the students in the classroom are able to learn, it's, it's pretty simple. So we have success throughout Lincoln where there hasn't been for a little while, so. And is that, is that it for me? Yeah? That's it? Okay. One small for the sea of blue over here. Here's crazy, Hattie Elliot.
I want to thank you, to the upper administration, for thinking out of the box, going off-grid. Anyone who knows me, I've been around a long time, a couple decades in Peoria education, and I love anything that's a little bit different and alternative. And I think what you have here is a really unique opportunity, and I would encourage more of a hybrid of a self-contained classroom for students who benefit from that, as well as the, what we have going on now where the kids switch classes. Every kid is different, and for this population I'm working with now, it seems to work really well to be in one classroom for all subjects all day. I, my kids, who my little speech is about, come on up. I, I want to say, I want to say about, about the data from our SWS classroom. I'm not a miracle worker, I'm not Mother Teresa. What, what I think has happened is the kids have been corralled, their discipline, being in one room, you get to know the kids really well, and you can control behaviors a lot better when there's less transition. And I think the kids have had it all along, they just didn't put forth the effort in the fall, maybe they just clicked through the test and, and could have cared less this time. I, Ms. Zimmerman can attest to it, you could have heard a pin drop for two hours when they took the reading, and, and same for math. And I really am impressed by the kids, I love the kids, I don't want the kids to go back, they can stay with me as long as they want. Thank you, Craig. And I think when Ms. Riley talks, or talked about the intangibles, the kids smiling, running to class, hugging me every day, hugging me every hour. I had to leave the other day for a meeting briefly, and one of the kids said, hey, you're not getting out of here without a hug, you know? So I think that shows enthusiasm for education, kind of a restart and a rebirth for these kids, and I, I see nothing but success for them. And this, this is Craig. All, all of these kids did fantastic, all four standing here, just fantastic on their NWEA meeting or exceeding their, their grade level, and I, I just couldn't be more pleased with Craig, Ms. Catrice, Ms. Anton, and Ms. Kayla, so they need a round. Thank you.
And I'm going to ask them before they seat themselves to do one thing for me, communicate, go.
Please, thank you, you're welcome. Yes ma'am, no ma'am, yes sir, no sir, excuse me, I'm sorry. Help me, I have, I can't, I will be elite.
Oh, that's not possible without the past. And when I refer to the past, I talk about when I was their age, I had superheroes, Batman, Superman, I love them both. They have superheroes, except you can't see the capes. These teachers, right here and back me, your teachers, they are the superheroes. Let's make some noise for them. And they have some comments they'd like to share. We got some comments from the superheroes, so if you take a quick look, those are some Harrison comments, from teachers not in the SWS but can feel the benefit of it. Next slide will be some from Lincoln. They're high-fiving each other at times, Lincoln, they're a little giddy. Next, next slide is a couple more. And you got to ask, where do we go from here? Where do we go where you send us? How about, we are right now active in Manual Academy, Peoria High School, Richwoods High School. We have over 40 students, I believe, in each of those locations, who all speak the same language. You heard what the kids were saying. So what's that mean? Fewer confrontations. What's that mean? Your, your strategic plan, which said get behavior under control, is working. And it's not just at the high school level, we have two large groups of junior high students participating in the junior Elite program. So look out, we're going to grow, we're going to help you save lives. I want to, I want to leave you with this last piece of video, that should get you kind of excited, because it's fun to do right. Got to get the modern technology prepped, yeah. Be happy to answer any questions that the board might have about the concept?
Anybody have any questions, comments? Well, I'll just, I'll just make a comment, I'm happy to see us doing something, you know, for 14 years I've been talking about, we need a transition center to transition the kids to, to a place where they can get ready to come back into the classroom, and this is as close as I've seen it come so far. You know, I've always been excited, though.
Keep moving. Thank you very much.
We'll give you a minute or two to transition out. Thank you all for coming.
Your kids will tell them, your kids will risk them.
So you got a speech?
I'm sorry.
Do you have a dance skill there?
And then maybe you want to put your eyes?
In the middle of my... No, because I examine all the time. Who's that, Josiah?
Josiah Williams.
Yeah, he works for, he works for Sherri Bustos.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, we'll give them a couple of minutes to transition, so we'll be able to hear. Okay, next on our agenda is the school reconfiguration final proposal. Dr. Karat?
Thank you, President, thank you, President Ross, board. I wanted to thank you for giving us the green light to conduct this, this study around school configuration, and so we would like to present to you the final proposal. I just wanted to say some quick background, this, this idea regarding grade configuration has been around for a while. It came up, for example, during our, our public forums at the beginning of the school year. It also came up during district strategic planning, when I conducted my superintendent's roundtable, that came up also. And it also came up during the budget program committee discussions. So there's been a, a lot of buzz around this topic. And I guess what, the why is very important, so why, why are we even having this discussion? There's quite a bit to do in our district, and so what's the big why? And the primary reason for even exploring this idea has to do with our current grade level configuration and the inconsistency, and its inconsistency, inconsistency, inconsistency throughout our district. So currently, we really have no clear pattern, and we have an, an ineffective student flow. So that's the primary reason for really exploring this, this predicament. And what happens with our current configuration, because of the, the configuration that we have right now, you have some overcrowdedness in, in some buildings and some, some areas where space is underutilized. And so I think, again, the, the why, the big why, is we would like to address and redress the need for a flow that allows our students to enter and exit each school at the same point in time, and to be effectively grouped to better focus on teaching and learning. So that's, that's the big why. We talk about the jagged configurations that we have, we would like more cohesiveness and a better flow. And one of the things I promised the board members, that we would, we would sort of take it on the road and sort of share the idea with as many stakeholders as possible. And you can just see how, in, in terms of communication, so it's like, okay, there's, there's sort of an interesting situation that we're experiencing in our district. We, here are some of the things that we, some of the findings, let's have a discussion. And we had our initial board presentation December 14th, and then you can see we've, we've worked collaboratively with the union also, and it has been an ongoing discussion with them, not only January 7th, where we met with them, the union leadership, Manual, we've met with the principals also, all of the principals. Sometimes we have sort of customized it, we met with Glenn Oak and Lincoln's principal, for example, at one meeting, Thomas Jefferson's principal at another, because they're all sort of unique, their, their situations are very, very unique, so we wanted it to be personalized. And then you can see additional, so not only did we meet with administrators, but I also met with staff and parents. And you can see, you can get, see the list of meetings when they were held, Manual, Tree Win, Tree Win rescheduled for the week of, so I'm actually, because of Ms. Andrews is out, I would like her to be part of that discussion with her staff, so they've, we've all agreed to postpone it to, to this, this week. But Harrison, I've met with, with faculty, Lincoln, we've met, Roosevelt, we've met, TJ, we've met, with parents and their PTO and so forth, Northmore, I've met with their staff, Calvin Coolidge, we met with their staff, Alessa Hinton, Chatter Oak, Parent University, met with them, PTO council, we're scheduled to meet with them, I'm looking forward to having a conversation with them on Monday, ongoing city updates, and so you can sort of, actually, Peoria Journal Star picked it up and, and did a nice job with, with, with the diagrams and those sorts of things. So here's some additional, oh, this is, this is important. So we're presenting this, this final proposal to you today. You've had the information for, the revised and updated information within your midst for your review and marination and discussion. And, and so the, the plan is to present it to you today, have a conversation about it, and then come back at a special board meeting on March 8th for, for an approval, or actually a recommendation, your recommendation on the, on the plan. But if you, and the reason we have, we, we're sort of, we have to follow this evaluation guidelines, Senate Bill 7 evaluation guidelines, and there's strict guidelines and deadlines that we must follow around evaluation and reduction in workforce and those sorts of things. So all of this is sort of connected, and the eighth would still allow us to be compliant with the state's guidelines. So this just, I just wanted to share with you some of the deadlines that we're up against, but we're still doing well with, with, with our timeframe. So this is a summary of the, the proposal. So this is a summary of the proposal and as it relates to the recommendation, we wanted to put it on one page. It's, you have a thick document in front of you, probably over 80, 80-something pages and I apologize for that, but this is it in a nutshell, to be honest with you. So you can see there are the schools that are impacted and the square footage is there also, the current enrollment, the proposed enrollment, the changes. And then, yeah, so let's look at Thomas Jefferson, for example. And this all sort of kind of resonated with me because of Thomas Jefferson and the situation that they were in. I'm like, okay, wow, we really, really, really need to do something about this. Thomas Jefferson had a huge second grade classroom and they actually needed another teacher, but they had no room. There was just really no space at all. And so you can see then, TJ is currently a K6 building and the proposal is to transition to a K4 building. So the number of changes, that just means they would lose two grade levels. And you can see the current enrollment, the proposed enrollment and so forth. And Franklin, K5, plus pre-K for TJ. Yeah, that should be K4 plus pre-K. So actually Franklin is, should be K4 instead of K5, that was an errand apart. So they would actually, they would lose one grade level. Does that make sense? Yep. I don't know where that came from. We had it as K4.
I pasted it.
Oh, you cut and paste, okay. So Franklin, just as a correction, that should be K4 and the staff, they know, they're aware of it. So K4 plus pre-K. Calvin Coolidge would remain the same. The thing about Calvin Coolidge is they would inherit about 109 additional students. Those students would come either from Franklin and Carla will get into that piece, will tell you where they're coming from. Sterling is currently pre-K plus the middle school 5'8" and we're proposing that it be a pure 5'8" and the pre-K students would be rerouted to other areas. And there's some recommendations regarding how we would make that happen. Glen Oak is currently K6 and what we're recommending, we've had really good discussion with, actually, the majority of faculty, and the recommendation is ultimately to transform Glen Oak to a K8 building, but it will be staggered over time. So for the upcoming school year, for example, it would be K7. So those current, the sixth graders that are currently in the system, they would then be, they would be seventh graders, so they would keep their, they would be, they would keep their seventh graders, right? And then the following year, the seventh graders would be eighth graders. And so it wouldn't, because it doesn't really make sense to sort of reroute the eighth graders from Lincoln to Glen Oak for their last year. So that's that idea. And Lincoln would be, it would be the same, K8, K8, and we'll talk to you about what actually happened there. It's a little bit, we've made it cleaner and a more defined boundary. And Tree Win, which is K8, the recommendation is K6 plus pre-K. And Harrison, also K8, the recommendation is K6 plus pre-K. And both of those, those two buildings would feed and provide students to Manuel Academy. And so they would serve as a direct feeder to Manuel Academy. Roosevelt, you heard, Roosevelt is currently K8. There'd be a huge focus on the middle school 5'8" transforming to Magnet, providing support to Roosevelt to make that happen. So K4 would still remain neighborhood school as it's been in the past and 5'8" would be the Magnet School. And you can see Manuel is currently 812. The recommendation is, again, 12, I mean, 712, with the seventh and eighth graders coming from Tree Win and Harrison and going over to Manuel. Woodrow Wilson, about the same, 7'4", Whittier remains the same, just some minor boundary tweaks. And Valeska Hinton is an action item on our agenda this evening because they're in a different calendar and they're currently pre-K through first grade and the recommendation is to make it a pre-K hub and rerouting the kindergarteners and first graders back to their, back to their home school and doing more with PCCO to relieve that waiting list, that pre-K waiting list that has about 464, 64 students on that list. So I've given you a summary and I'll ask Carla then to quickly give you just over the environment
Okay, before I start with Thomas Jefferson, I just wanted to explain the tier system first, since I'll be mentioning that with each slide. For high schools, that would be tier one, high school and middle school, and we're counting any school that has a seventh and eighth grade then as tier one and then tier two would be the later start. So tier one, starting at 7:30 and tier two, starting at 8:30. For Thomas Jefferson, as we said, everything started with Thomas Jefferson. We will have the fifth and sixth graders then moving on earlier to their middle school and transforming Thomas Jefferson to K4. That will give us five classrooms and then we will have the mobile classrooms that we will be able to move out, which has four. That will give us that one additional classroom that will have the third graders that are going to need more space. They would be able to utilize that room. So we should work out fine there. We did have a lot of discussion about the round, but we will be leaving the round. As it is now, no changes there. And then it will be a tier two school. There'd be no change on that. Okay, for Franklin, we're going to remove the fifth grade, K4. The students will go on to Calvin Coolidge and Sterling, whichever their home school would be, just a year early. It has a potential for being a PCCO site then. They will have three additional classrooms because of the fifth graders moving out. They should be able to rearrange. They've got a couple of very small kindergarten rooms. They'll be able to scoot the kids over to larger rooms and this will also allow PCCO an opportunity perhaps to be there as well. It's a tier two school with 15 minutes added. We're looking at staying the tier two school with an 8:30 to 3:30 time period. Calvin Coolidge, they will be receiving the fifth and sixth graders from Whittier, Franklin, Thomas Jefferson. This will be quite an influx of students, around 100. And this will create the need to do some in-house construction. We've been really excited looking into that. The principal has it mapped out. We were checking out the building and it's an interesting setup where the current library really was two classrooms, so that will be easy to break that in. It just has an archway to break that back into the two classrooms that would be needed. And then there was also the, moving the library then to the old location where it had been. There was also the ability to add more classrooms in the old gym balcony area and we're looking forward to being able to get the architectural services and then be able to move forward with that as soon as we can and we're looking at about $150,000 for that. It would be a tier one school and that would be no change with a 7:30 start time. For Sterling, there would also be an influx of students there. We would be getting the fifth and sixth graders from Franklin and Thomas Jefferson. There would be minimal, very minimal in-house remodel there, probably from $7,000 to $10,000. There was a concern about corkboard in the area that is currently housing the PCCO students. What we want to do is open that up and clean it up a little bit and then that could be used for some encore classes, perhaps art or other classes. And then that would be also a tier one school that would be the 7:30 to 2:30 with no change. And then there'd be some special education classrooms that would be moved out in order to allow for the influx of the students and also to allow those students to be nearer Okay, for Glen Oak and Lincoln, we kind of talked about that in combination. What we are proposing there is we are going from the K6 to K8, but we're doing that in steps. So they, at first for Glen Oak, it would be K7. The boundary has been changed where it's kind of a square then around Glen Oak and then we have kind of the kidney shape that takes in the Lincoln. The idea here was to balance out the two schools' population and then be able to work into them both being K8 then by the FY '18 year. The current, it's Glen Oak, I'm sorry, is currently a tier two school and the recommended change would be then to a tier one school to join the middle and high schools.
I have a question. In regards to the students coming from Franklin, they'll be going to Calvin Coolidge?
And Sterling.
And Sterling, okay.
Based on their address? Right. It's just moving a year earlier?
Yeah. Why, I guess I'm wondering, the Thomas Jefferson students maybe being as far north like that would not be going to Sterling? I'm just...
I was trying to think, some are, again, by, yeah, by address. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just based on the address, okay.
Okay, then for Lincoln, they would remain a K8 and then the sixth grade Glen Oak students in the Glen Oak boundary would not move to Lincoln for grade seven until the following year, again, as we were saying. And I'd already talked about how the boundary changes and then it's a current tier one school and so it would stay a tier one school being a K8, K8 building. Okay, for Tree Win and broken into the day treatment area as well, currently, K8 would become the K6 because we'd have our seventh and eighth graders moving on to Manuel, looking at about 100 students. Day treatment would change just a little bit because we were looking at having the K6 students that are currently at Woodrow on one floor while the high school students would be on another floor of the day treatment section of the building. And then there's also then, with the move out of some of the students, the potential to have the PCCO, a couple of classrooms there as well. It's currently a tier one school and it would be recommended then to be a tier two school.
Question on the Tree Win numbers. Does that include the, does that include the day treatment?
No, they're at the bottom there, listed separately. Okay, for Harrison, it would be the partner with Tree Win. The seventh and eighth graders would move on to Manuel, approximately 100 students. And there would be the potential to expand the head start. They have two early head start programs right now. It'd be an opportunity to expand there. It's a current tier two school and then there'd be no change recommended as it would be going Roosevelt, you would have the return of the K and fifth graders from the annex areas as others would be given the opportunity to grandfather and that's why we would be focused on the K and fifth graders. There'd be the return to the Magnet School status then, starting in the middle school or it would be for the middle school. And then it would change to tier one as it would be a K8 building. If you want to talk about opt-out at all at this point or not, what opt-out choices are? Yes? And then as far as opt-out, if you are west of MacArthur Highway, and Josh can help me with this a little bit, that would be the Harrison-Manuel divide for the school that you would attend if you were west. And then east, you would go to Lincoln if you were opting out then of Roosevelt. For the, I'm sorry, for the fine arts program for a fifth grade.
Can I ask a quick question? So I know you, for the fine arts middle school part, there are auditions that are held, right? So does that mean, are there any, any middle schoolers that have Roosevelt as a home school? Is it only the fine arts students that will be there for middle school? Because I know you're talking opt-out, so that makes it sound to me like that the neighborhood kids who are middle school would still be going there in addition to the fine arts that audition in, is that correct?
Right. What has happened in the past, remember I was at Roosevelt for three years and it was truly Magnet and so the idea was to actually use that K4, the neighborhood kids, to build the pipeline. And we really did a nice job. When they transitioned, they rolled over, maybe three to five would opt-out and our district always designated about three buildings that they could opt-out to. Does that answer your question?
I think so. So there are going to be neighborhood kids who don't audition in at the middle school level that would still attend or could still attend Roosevelt unless they opted out, is that correct?
Well, they would, usually how it's happened in the past is they would have to, for middle school, they would have to audition in, get accepted, if not, attend those three options, those three other buildings.
Okay, so if they don't audition in?
Then they would opt-out to those, to Manuel, Lincoln and Harrison, those three buildings. That's how it's always been done.
Okay, then moving on to Manuel. For Manuel, as we said, we would be adding the seventh and eighth grade from Harrison and Tree Win would make it a 712 building and the current tier is 7:30 to 2:30. There would be no change there. And then as we'd proposed before, just between Woodrow Wilson and Whittier, we're talking about a slight boundary change there that's on the south side of Bradley Park. It involves around 15 students. We would go ahead and make the move, see if I can say it the right direction to, they would become Whittier students. Oh, and then Calvin Coolidge instead of Sterling as well. Okay, Guardian Angel, currently what we are doing is renting from the Catholic diocese for the, usually between 12 and 16 exceptional students. It's because they are housed in our district that we then educate them in our district. They are planning to move to Morton in March next month and we will continue to educate them through the rest of the year in order to keep a clear path for them to finish out and not disrupt their educational environment. And it's also required by law to finish the year that they've started. The transportation, once they move, will be provided by Guardian Angel, so there's no cost to the district that way. They too wanted to ensure that the students would be able to finish with the same teachers and staff. The opportunity that it will give us then for the new year as they transfer over to the Morton schools and use the teachers and aides in their new district, we will have two teachers and an aide that will be available for our special ed students that are remaining in the district and we do have a shortage of staff, so this will be great to move them out to where they're needed. And it will also be a savings of $7,500 per year on the rent that we've been paying. As of the last day of school, they will transfer over to a summer program in Morton and then they will continue on next year in their new district. And then for Valeska, just a quick summary, again, we did go through it in great detail the last meeting, but that they would be a pre-K... the last meeting, but that they would be a pre-K only site, that we would then have classrooms coming available, five rooms. Because of the kindergarten and first grade moving out, we would have opportunity to go ahead and expand one classroom with our own staff. And then we would also be able to open it up to P C C E O, perhaps for early Head Start or other Head Start classes as needed and as we continue to work with them.
It, my turn. So another part of this proposal is we're always looking at the transportation. We had several meetings looking at the maps and looking at boundaries and things. One of the things that I need to talk about is transportation eligibility. What we're proposing is that we only provide transportation to those students who are eligible for transportation. What I mean by eligible, they're a mile and a half or more from their home school, or they are crossing a state-approved hazard. There will be some schools that will be impacted by this significantly, which would be Lincoln, Harrison, and Tree Wynn, where currently transportation is offered to all students. Other schools that would be impacted by this would be Peoria High, Roosevelt, Keller, and Whittier, because there have been some changes to the streets and roads since we first established our hazard boundaries, where they would no longer qualify as a hazard. So we'll see some changes there. To elaborate a little bit on what would be considered a hazard, basically hazards are based on a point system. What we use to simplify it for ourselves when we're evaluating hazards is a spreadsheet. We answer several questions on the spreadsheet and come up with a total of points. So there's four types of serious hazards that we're looking at, and that's walking along a roadway, walking on a roadway, crossing a roadway, or having to cross railroad tracks. On this big slide here, basically what this is saying is that these different factors are given a point value based on their severity, anywhere from a half a point to five points, depending on how severe the criteria is or the factor that you're looking at. What this also states is that the, the district has the ability to give two judgment points or two points that we can assign based on something that isn't necessarily in the spreadsheet. So to use, to give you an example of that, if we're looking at a student crossing a busy street, but the points only total up to eleven, you need twelve points in order for the state to consider that a hazard. What we can do is we can look at other variables to deem that a hazard based on our judgment point, but we do have to be able to, to validate our reason. So basically hazards are determined on a point system.
I have a question on that hazard. I heard you mention that in the past it would impact Tree Wynn?
That's correct, yes.
And so the fact that we still don't have sidewalks for the children to walk to Tree Wynn was one of the major reasons why we were providing transportation in the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
And they still don't have sidewalks.
Correct.
How many points you get for no sidewalk?
I'd have to actually look at the spreadsheet, but none of the streets that I've looked at down there qualified as a hazard. It wasn't reaching the twelve-point mark. But again, my team is still going through and looking at all the different pathways. What gets complicated with the hazards are, is it's looking at a pathway. So in other words, it's not necessarily looking at straight from this individual student's home to the school, but for pathways through the neighborhood. As long as that pathway does not exceed a mile and a half, and there is a non-hazardous pathway, then the area would be considered non-hazardous.
Yeah, because there are no, no sidewalk, they'd have to walk in the streets to get to.
Correct. There's, there is on the spreadsheet that we utilize, there are points that would be assigned to not having sidewalks. So we have to take into consideration the traffic volume. Well, here it is, here's the consideration, the criteria, or the grade levels, location and placement of sidewalks, or whether or not they do or do not have sidewalks, the speed limit on the street, the volume of traffic per hour, how many lanes, and the distance the student would have to walk in that environment.
And we still do have to transport children with special needs, right?
That's correct, yes.
A quick question. Do we have any idea number-wise how many students that are receiving transportation this year that are next year not going to be eligible? Do we have a number?
I, I do have a, a number that I looked up. I don't have it with me, but it was approximately eleven hundred students.
Okay, and do we have a communication plan to talk to parents, to explain to them why suddenly they aren't going to be transported? Okay.
Because that means you will inform them of the pathways you found to make it safe to walk?
That's correct, yes. Mm-hmm.
And those pathways don't include alleys, right?
That's correct. They don't include alleyways. We're looking at the, the major roadways.
Okay. And I know during the time when, when the weather is really bad and the snow and that, I'm not sure how we can take that into consideration, but those pathways are not pathways if they're, they're not walkable, right?
It's, again, that would be, that would fall on one of the judgment points. So using Tree Wynn as an example, let's say we're close. Let's say we were able to get ten points. We could use one of the judgment points and say that the area is not necessarily cleared, or those pathways aren't necessarily cleared in the, in the winter time. So we could use that as a, as a judgment point. There are other things that we can use as judgment points, but it has to be based on vehicular activity.
And also know that we've been talking about a certain number of schools that are listed on this, in this particular document, but does that transportation system, does that, that include all of our schools? Are we just looking at these? Because, I mean, we have other schools other than the ones that are listed here. Does that apply to them as well?
We're looking at all schools, yes. We're currently, right now, my team and I are going through and looking at all of our hazard areas for all schools. So far, the ones that have been identified are the ones that we know are going to be the greatest impact. An example with Whittier, the, the upgrades to Main Street, those potentially have now made Main Street no longer considered a hazard.
And Keller.
And Keller. Sidewalks were added in the Holly area. That lowered those points in that area and caused that area to no longer be qualified as a hazard.
While we're on transportation, do you have any idea with the movement of students and with this study that you're doing as far as the, the kids that won't be eligible, is there a significant difference in the number of bus routes, either more or less, starting next year than we will have, than we have this year? And if, if there is, is it going to be more routes or less routes?
Well, what I did this year was I took all of the proposed changes, and I basically cloned our current database, and then applied all of those changes that were, are being proposed based on our current students. So the premise saying, if this were to start tomorrow, what would it look like? Without diving a whole lot into it and really trimming the fat off, I was able to cut approximately eight routes.
Okay.
Annex?
I need the, the mic.
Sorry.
Mr. Regberg, can you go ahead and give the desegregation background, and then I'll pick up after you? Thanks.
Really, really very early on in the process, the question came up, isn't, isn't the district under some kind of a court-ordered busing plan for desegregation purposes? So I looked, I looked into the history of that, and the, the answer is no. There, there is not a court-ordered desegregation busing plan in place. The last lawsuit involving the district and the federal government concerning desegregation issues was actually one that was filed by the district in the nineteen eighties, and that lawsuit was settled in nineteen eighty-five. And so the, the, that settlement agreement did not at all deal with, with busing. In fact, the word busing doesn't even appear in it, but it really adopted a different kind of philosophy to achieve integration of the schools in District one fifty. And that was really to, to, to close, or to, actually, the word used is raise, Irving Greeley and possibly Longfellow Schools, and to create one new school to house those three attendance areas. Again, that was to be, the boundaries were to be set to become, so that it would become a naturally integrated school. And, and under this agreement, the, the district was to make certain reports to the Office of Civil Rights, to the Department of Education for five years. That was done. And again, the settlement agreement did not require, did not require the district to bus students to desegregate Peoria schools. And so nothing in the agreement would prevent the district from busing students if it, if it wanted to. The, the other thing, I think that's important here is the, that settlement agreement was entered into in nineteen eighty-five, and it's hard to believe, that's, that's more than thirty years ago at this point, or approximately thirty years ago. And there've been, you know, just more than a few changes in the community in that time in that now minority students, or those students who are classified as minorities actually constitute the majority of students in the district. So there's been a lot of movement around the district. And, and actually, the other, the other side of this was that the district, and Carla and Chris and the, and the team actually studied the, the distribution of the ethnicity of students under the reorganization plan and calculated the, the changes that would occur in the distribution of various different ethnic groups. And the change, the effect of this plan is negligible in that regard. So it's, it's really, I think it's fair to characterize this as a, as a neutral plan in, in that regard.
Thank you. So currently, and then what, when, when this is applied, what I would like to share with you is, what does that look like? So we have, there's a slide that we have, actually, there it is in front of you. You can see, there are three levels, primary, middle, and high. And you can see the kids where they're being sent to, and, and what district really, they're being sort of, what district is losing, you know, those numbers. So for example, the primary level, Keller, is receiving thirty-five, and the recommendation is, obviously, the good thing about this slide is those children in those buildings would be grandfathered in until the highest grade level. Even if you go down to Richwoods, where there, it says eighty-seven, that really is from the Manuel area, but they're being routed to Richwoods, they would be allowed to be grandfathered in, so they technically would stay and graduate if they wanted to. But we just wanted to show you, it's, a lot of people in the community think it's really a lot of kids, but it's about, as we can see, it's about two hundred and eighty students. And I think it's, it's good that we're having this discussion, because this is sort of a, you know, we've, it's, it's been in existence for thirty years, but it, it seems to me it has been sort of a short-term fix for just a few. And what I would like us to, I think this plan really forces us to focus on high quality at every building. And, and so that's, that's sort of the message I wanted to, to share with, with this. You can see, again, where they're, and that's just a pictorial school desegregation background and a map. And again, as Carla mentioned, it's River West, Village Green, and a certain area between MacArthur Highway and Webster. And, and they're just really being bussed. And, and as Mr. Regberg mentioned, you know, thirty years ago, it was for integration, and, you know, the, the demographics of the districts has changed significantly. So what I would like us to really do is, is focus on providing high-quality education and equity at each building, instead of sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul. I know there's some questions about this, and what we'll continue to do as a district is work with our families, for those individuals who, and actually, Chris will talk about choice and boundary waivers and that sort of thing. So why don't I just send it over? Ms. Costeck, okay.
That was my, that was my question in regards to these particular numbers. And I had heard, I've, I've heard the opting out, so I was wondering, would parents still have an option or opportunity for boundary waivers? And that, that again, could have a tremendous impact on how these numbers change based on the boundary waivers, if there are still going to be boundary waivers, for those families that want their children to stay in the school that they're currently attending?
Right. So for example, the eighty-seven that we saw at Richwoods, they would, they would be grandfathered in, so they would not be impacted at all. So they would stay and, and graduate. So we're talking about the, the rising kids, the new ones that they would be routed to Manuel.
I'm, I'm more, more or less the, the middle, primary and middle school children that are attending the Lindberghs, the Lindberghs, the...
Right.
Those schools.
Right.
Those are the ones that I'm...
You're thinking of?
Wondering about...
Okay.
How that number could very well be impacted...
Right.
...if parents wish to keep their children.
Right. So they'll be allowed to stay until they've completed the highest grade. And let's say, for example, they're at Keller, and they wanted to continue that path of Lindbergh. An option that Chris will talk about will be a boundary waiver. Option where they'll fill out a boundary waiver form. It will go through Mr. Copeland's office, and based on space, there'll be an attendance contract, a behavior contract, stuff that we've done before. As, as a principal at Whittier, we, we had boundary waivers all the time. So that option will be based on space, that option will be made available. Chris, can you, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So in the past, we have had two options, not including No Child Left Behind when that was in place, but we've, the last few years, we've had school choice and boundary waivers as options for our parents. And the school choice programs provided transportation and basically affected five schools, the three former Edison schools, Franklin, Rolling Acres, and Northmore. They did have a longer day, or still do have a longer day. And so those were considered special programs, as well as, that's how we've treated Roosevelt for the past few years, and then our Manuel seventh and eighth grades. So students electing to opt into those programs from another school in the district, or opting out of those programs if they lived in those attendance areas to a different school, were considered based on the, the classroom space that was available in, in their grade at the school that they wanted to go to. And we were able to make some placements. And then those students that opted in or out of those programs were, were provided transportation. Boundary waivers, basically, any, any family can request to go from one school to another within the district. The difference is those that do not provide transportation. So all of the schools, or all of the students in the annexed areas, those, those will be grandfathered in to the highest grade level, which is similar to how we've done choice and boundary waivers. Once you reach, if, if I'm going to Northmore, once I reach fourth grade for my fifth grade year, I would have to reapply for that boundary waiver or choice placement. Here, they would be grandfathered in just the same, and then they could apply for a boundary waiver. Our choice program would be going away under this proposal so that we can keep transportation costs down. We have several routes, and then I believe a majority of the routes that Josh mentioned, those eight, are saved by not providing choice all over the district like we have, because we have students coming from all over the district and going all over the district based on those student placements for choice. So only students that are grandfathered in and those attending a special program, such as the Preparatory School for the Arts at Peoria High, Fine Arts Magnet at Roosevelt, Richwoods IB, and Washington Gifted, those two, we're actually providing transportation already. Those would continue, and both Fine Arts programs would also receive transportation, of course. So under the proposal, new school choice placements will be considered for boundary waivers only, and those, we, last year, we did that window right after spring break, and that is our plan again this year. We return, our, our students return on April fourth, that's when the window would open. And we'll actually keep it open through the, that end of the first week of May, so May sixth, for the twenty-sixth... 6th, for the 2016-17 school year. Again, boundary waivers don't, do not provide transportation, and they allow, the application allows the family to choose three schools outside of their attendance area, and then sign a, a behavior attendance contract with the, the principal if they are, if they are granted that placement. I did want to touch base back here with the projected numbers. Again, we had 287 students, and then these numbers as well, that are considered in the annexed area. And I think our last board presentation, we said there were 315. So, our projected numbers, what we did was actually roll the students forward one grade level for next year. And of course, we don't know who the students are coming in into the kindergarten class. So, that is why you'll see that the enrollments drop for each of the affected schools here, because those kindergarten classes, classes are not accounted for within these projections. And just the same for the, the annexed area at Roosevelt. Last time, we said 315, that's how many current students are part of that area. Once we graduate out that senior class, and not knowing who the, the kindergarten class is coming in, that's why that number's dropped to 287.
I wanted, I wanted to make a point that with the high schools.
Sure.
I think we have, we have some rule that says if you start in, in that high school, you can remain in there until you graduate. So, it's not any change.
Until the end of the year, if we're not, if, we're not referring to the kids that are, that are being routed in, right? If, if they move, then they can stay until the end of the year.
Yeah, if they move, but if they're already there for a certain number of years, they can stay there until they graduate. There's something.
High school, high school has always been, if you start at the high school, you can finish at the high school.
Finish at the high school.
Yeah, so that's not really different. You might want to look that up.
Unless there is attendance or behavior, it should be.
Okay, yeah.
Yes. So, it's not affecting the high schools that much, I'm saying.
Correct. So, yeah, the only, the only impact then would be the kindergarten 4th and 9th graders for next school year.
And then, the question is, if it's not impacting the high schools because of that rule, those students will still get busing?
Correct. The, for the annexed students, they would receive busing until they graduate the building that they're in.
Okay, but what about a high school student who starts at a high school and moves to a different high school and wants to stay? They wouldn't be bused?
According to board policy, they do not get transportation.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, just a summary real quick of the tier system. The, the reasons for the recommendation were to get all of our middle, high schools and our K8s on the same tier. So, I believe Treewind, Roosevelt, and Glen Oak were the three impacted by those time changes. And by them going to K8 or moving away from K8, we wanted all the K8s on the same schedule along with the middle schools. That helps with athletics, that helps with sit-day planning, to have those same grade levels on, on that same schedule.
Can I ask, Northmore, Rolling Acres, Lindberg, and Keller? And I, I looked at those numbers, Northmore will go from 406 to 292. So, and I guess I'm asking, you might have answered it, what happened, what's happened to those kids that are presently at Northmore? Because that was a choice school?
Correct.
Right.
And Ro, and Rolling Acres was also?
A choice school.
Right.
Okay. So, the children that are in there, well, depending on the grade level, will be at another school?
They were rolled over in, back into Northmore and Rolling Acres. So, if I was at Northmore on choice this year, and I'm not going to be a 5th grader moving buildings.
They'll stay.
Or a 9th grader moving buildings.
Where would they go?
They'll stay.
They'll stay right there?
They'll stay. They'll be grandfathered in.
Okay.
Yeah, Rolling Acres.
This doesn't include the, the kindergarteners that may come in?
Correct.
Right, that's correct.
So, the numbers could go up.
Correct.
Yeah, they, they can go up from what's up here. All right.
Yeah, and, yeah, so the kindergarten class is not included in these numbers. So, for instance, Northmore, the drop from 406 to 292, there would be probably close to 100 kindergartners coming in at that building, which would then put that, that number back up close to 400.
So, the idea is the kids from that annexed area would go to Roosevelt, for example?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back just a, one step back, and I guess I'm having a really, really, really hard time with the younger children's, that kindergarten starting school at 7:30 in the morning. Just have a hard time with that one. You know, it's, in the winter, it's dark. Many of these children are, are standing on a corner, waiting for a bus or whatever. And then, again, I mean, well, with walking or whatever, but I, I know that there have been many, many studies on, on children and the start times of classes. I, I'm just, I, I'm not real comfortable with that 7:30 start time at this particular point in time. I guess I need to do a little bit more research on it, but that, that, that early, that K through, oh, even 3rd grade, 2nd or 3rd grade, it just kind of, I, I, I'm not real comfortable with that, that 7:30 start time for them.
It's currently happening in a system, I mean, Treewind and Lincoln, they're K.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah. And, and, yeah. And I'll, you know, the, when you walk into the buildings, those kids, the younger ones are ready and alert at 7:30. It's actually, it's, it's the older ones, and that's probably a conversation we may want to have in a couple of years, but all of the research shows, the older ones need to start later, and the younger ones really need to start at 7:30.
There was a big study done on that regarding high school kids, and, and, but if I'm looking at this correctly, Charter OK4 starts at 8:30.
Right.
And Northmore K4 starts at 8:30, so does Thomas Jefferson, and so does Keller, and so does Heinz, they're all K4. So, they start at 8:30.
And they would remain at 8:30.
And they remain at 8:30? Okay. And then, the 5 to 8, that's a 7:30.
That's correct. And then, you have other things that are, other factors, the sports, and there's.
Right.
School improvement, and so, you have some other things you have to take into consideration. And Josh, you can jump into.
Like, for, for instance, we usually have a three-tiered system. We used to run a three-tiered system, and what it boiled down to is that we ended up with about 15, 20 minutes to run a route under that, and it was very difficult logistically to try to, to support that. So, a few years ago, we went to the two-bell system to work the logistics out. But primarily, the primary schools, the kindergarten, or the kindergarten through 4th grade schools have been primarily, with some exception, on Tier 2. And middle school, high school has been primarily on Tier 1. By going K8, there is some now that would be on Tier 1, but by and large, most of the primaries are on Tier 2.
And I, and you know, I, I don't, like Ms. Kostick, and I was just saying, I don't have, I don't have as much concern as them being at school at 7:30 as I, as I do them being.
Transportation.
Walking to school at 7:30 in the morning, if they don't, if they don't have transportation. If we could provide them transportation, or figure out how to get that done, you know, that's, that's a different story.
Well, as far as the transportation goes, we're looking at eligibility, we're looking at reimbursement. As a district, we can provide transportation to whomever we want to provide transportation to, but are we going to get reimbursement back for that transportation? And as it stands, at some of the schools that we talked about, like Treewind, Harrison, Lincoln, there are a large number of students that we are providing transportation for that we are not, that we cannot claim, where they're not reimbursable. So, 100% of that cost is on the district. What we are proposing is that we move those resources to areas where we are getting reimbursement for those resources, so that those resources are redeployed under this plan to maximize that reimbursement.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I think we should find money, or, or keep working on it. You know, the, as far as the reimbursement, the safety to me means more than the reimbursement. So, I mean, it's a balancing act, and we may not get any money.
Right.
Maybe we could be a little more creative in finding some money, because transportation at one point was about the only division that had money, you know, that were in the black.
Before we started moving money around a little bit.
Now, it's not. I mean, we're only getting, in the eligibility areas, we're only being reimbursed 50% of our total expenditures. So, we're not even getting 100%. So, I mean, we can provide transportation, but we're going to continue to dip into a deficit.
The other thing, too, I'd like to caution is, we, we, we don't call it the walk area. So, we don't, well, all we're saying is that these students would not be eligible for free transport. We're not saying they have to walk. So, we would encourage parent transport, we would encourage them, if they do walk, to walk as a group. There are alternatives to it, but what we're saying is they're not eligible for free transport. We're not at all saying you have to walk, so.
I just wanted to opine on one item, and, and Dr. Karat mentioned it, that, that transportation funding has been prorated for each of the last six years now, and we are down to about 60, 60 cents on the dollar that's owed. And you are correct, transportation has been in the black in, in many of those years, and still is hanging by a thread in the black, but.
Right, but it would have been more, but we moved money around some.
Well, I, I don't.
Before you came.
It's just, when you look at the, the corporate budget in total, it's, it's to the point where there isn't any money to move from one place to another, or to, to supplant transportation from, say, an ed fund budget or an M budget. I mean, we're, we're limited in what we can do. So, the plan in total is trying to not make this a cold, hard cash decision, but where we can best affect smart transportation, we are, and, and address your, well, position safety concerns as well.
All I'm saying is, we need to think outside of the box. At least come up with a cost for parents to pay for transportation if they have to, that at least be an option for them.
We'll look into it, Ms. Ross.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I think that it might be a thing we need to talk to the city. Most of those, those, those areas where there's no sidewalks are hard to walk.
Do any good?
They're, they're, it's hard, they're, it's hard to walk. They're, the pathways are there, but if there's snow, that's a real problem. So, with kindergartners walking through an area that does not have sidewalks, and they're uneven and hard to walk, they tend to walk in the street. And so, we need to have some real conversation about the, I think, the, the transportation part of it, and, and what can we come up with to, to deal with that? And I know that's the city's responsibility to put sidewalks in, but that might be a conversation we need to have.
Thank you. I just think that, I, I look at it, you know, sometimes you have to look past the almighty dollar and look at, at safety for our children, because that's who it's all about. It's all about our children, and, and their safety getting to and from school. So, you know, I hope that we may be able to, you know, have conversation on this and see if we can, you know, come together on something that's going to be a benefit for the child.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, you're not finished.
No, we're not. Go ahead, Ms. Wolfman.
Now, would you finished?
Okay, Chris is actually going to share briefly items under the topic of financial impact, but I just wanted to mention that, to the audience, the full presentation is on our website, and so they, they have access to it. And as I mentioned earlier, we have been working closely with the union, and there are three schools that Mr. Copeland referenced earlier, that have that extra 15 minutes. It has, they have a longer day. And part of this whole plan also is to sort of get everybody on that same Tier 1 or Tier 2. And we have three buildings that have a 15-minute extra day, Rolling Acres, Northmore, and Franklin. So, that needs to be bargained with the union. So, it's, it's something that we're having conversations, some conversation with, with them about, but it's definitely a recommendation in terms of truncating that extra 15 minutes.
Financial impact?
This will be short, because I think we've already hit most of this, but the program efficiencies, like I mentioned, getting similar schools on similar schedules, our staffing efficiencies. Currently, there are 30 teaching vacancies here within the district. We believe some of these moves would assist us in eliminating those unfilled positions and putting staff where they best fit, based on the staffing plan. Staffing levels are determined in April and May, and you saw that staffing timeline. And then, transportation, I think we hit all of that. There, the, the other two pieces I would add is the conversations Josh and I have had. As far as the elimination of those eight routes this year, that is without those kindergarten and 5th grade and 9th grade students being transported out of the annexed areas, and then, again, phasing out choice as well as an option, except for those students that are already placed there. So, those eight routes would be seen immediately. We think there would be additional routes as each class is graduated. But this year's routes, we'd actually redeploy those to the Roosevelt Magnet piece for our fine arts students that are accepted, and, because we would need additional busing as, as we grow that program. Finally, elimination, our.
Is it time? Sorry, is this a children?
Oh. Elimination of $50,000 per year, which is what we pay for the classroom pod at Thomas Jefferson. And then, of course, we mentioned the building modifications that would be needed at Sterling and Calvin Coolidge. So, that is the end.
That's the end? Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Kostick, do you have a question?
Question on the elimination of the pod, that's going what with it?
That'd be returning it to the company that we're renting it from.
So, the 50,000, that's for the breakdown, the breaking it down, transporting.
That is the annual lease amount.
That's a savings. The 50,000 was a savings.
Fifty, correct.
Of the savings.
Yes. Sorry.
For the first year, though, I mean, for the first year, it's not, because we're, we've got to pay for breaking it down and transporting it back to where it's going, correct? So, it's not actually a $50,000 savings, is it?
Correct. That's, that's a re, reoccurring savings, but there would be some cost the first year.
Okay.
And it's, and also in-house cost as far as taking down the, the wheelchair access and all of that. So, we, we do that in-house.
Gotcha.
Other questions? Ms. Wolfman?
I want to talk a little bit about some of the schools that are going to have drastic changes in numbers, particularly manual. And I know, because they could go up as much as 400 additional students. And we had this conversation when we first talked about 6 through 12, and I was uncomfortable with that. I, I know we've done 7 through 12 before, and I understand that we want to increase the enrollment at manual, and I certainly think this is a better way of doing it than changing the boundaries and bringing kids from the north end all the way down to manual. And I'm making the assumption, I just want, want to verbalize it, but with those 400 extra students, then we are going to be looking at how many CSOs we have in the building, and how many administrators, to make sure that they have the support they need administratively, even if that's going to be a bigger cost. So, that was the one thing. The other thing, too, is there's a lot of changes in a lot of the buildings, and I know we have to try it. I, I just hope that you're going to make sure that the administrators and staff in the buildings are comfortable with being able to look at you and saying, look, this isn't quite working, we need to tweak this, or we need to do this, and that they'll know they can come to you with those ideas without being penalized, because they're saying it's not working. Because they're going to be the ones who know for sure, and with our AIOs and everybody keeping an eye on that, to make sure that it is working. It could work some places and maybe not others, and we may need to tweak it. The only other, and I, I encourage the school administrators and staff to speak up about that, if they truly feel that it's not working in their buildings. This one, it's an off-the-wall question, and I don't expect that you'll have the answer, but do you have any idea, next year with all of these changes, how many students will be going to a different school than what they expected? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Mm-hmm.
And, and I don't expect you to have an answer for sure, but.
Yeah, we have, we can get that for you. Yep, we can get it.
And I'm not talking about just the annexed areas, I'm talking about the kids who thought they were going to be finishing through 8th grade, say, or 6th grade at TJ, and. grade, or sixth grade at TJ, and kids that thought that, all of those numbers. I just wonder how many kids are actually going to be going to a school different next year than what they originally expected.
We can get that.
Get that number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, everything you said, yes, 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 yes. It's important that, number one, the good thing, the administrators, particularly at manual, they were instrumental in sort of building the plan, because I started with six through twelve. And I know seven through twelve is not really their first preference, but they also understand the importance of building that pipeline, and kind of growing their own, and many of them that are currently there have been in a system where they've tried it, and it's worked, and so they're willing to give it a try again, and I've sort of vowed that we would provide as much support as we possibly can. And I'm encouraging them to be creative. We saw some things regarding school within a school. We talked about that. We talked about administrators. We talked about the Office of Social Emotional, and how that could provide some support. So, yes, I'm definitely opened, and I'm expecting some feedback in terms of implementation and glitches and the bugs.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do want to say that, when manual was doing the seven through twelve, it worked very well, because they were in academies. They were separated. They didn't come in contact with each other. Right now, the ninth grade academy that's there now is in a whole separate area. And, so it worked, it worked very well with the academies. It's not like they're all in there together. So, you know, creatively, it can be done, and it's probably, in my opinion, it needs to, there needs to be something to show manual as a high school, because their enrollment had really dropped pretty low. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Adler?
I just want to make a couple comments. First of all, I think this is a pretty bold proposal, in a good way, and I think it reflects another one of our action items on the agenda today, which is, you know, hiring Dr. Krot for a long-term contract. You know, we didn't ask for, you know, tweaking around the edges, or more of the same. We want that bold move to push our district forward, and so, I appreciate that. The other piece is, transportation piece jumped off the page for me right away as well. And I think a lot of times when we talk about the situation of our budget, you know, we'd say, "How can we focus on an area that, you know, doesn't impact classroom?" You know, we had Josh put up some estimates, you know, a bus route costs us, with a monitor, about ballpark thirty-eight thousand dollars. You know, that's easily could be a, maybe a younger, but it's a classroom teacher. I would much rather figure out how we smooth the edges and get kids to school safely, than worry about whether or not they're going to have a teacher when they get there. So, just my two cents.
Other questions? Thank you all. Please turn the lights back on, Mr.. Thank you. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for February eighth, two thousand sixteen. Can I motion?
I move. Second.
Any discussion on that? Ms. Tracy, would you call the roll?
Absolutely. Ms. Kostick?
Stay.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Presentation by audience. We have come to the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of the Peoria District 150 schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will have the staff person to help you, in addition to, the board members are accessible by email, and outside of these meetings, by phone, and also, our names and numbers are on the website. We realize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will be collecting those comments after each board meeting, to compile those and share with the board and administration. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes, and no one under age eighteen may address the board, unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher, without the consent of the majority of the board. Now normally, you will have to have your cards filled out by six-thirty in order to speak, but I see that we have an additional one, and I want to get the consensus of the board to allow anyone that wants to speak specifically on the configuration that we would be able to add. Ms. Wolfmeier?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Mr. Adler? And I'm okay with it, as well. Our first speaker is Mr. Savino Sierra. Come on down.
First of all, I still think the time limit for the public individual to speak should come back to five minutes, like we used to have, not to three, because sometimes we have something to say. The other day, you cut off Mr. Terry, you know, and he had a suggestion to make. It could have helped, you know, but you stubbornly didn't let him speak. You didn't ask the board if it was all right, if he could continue. And, like tonight, you asked permission to have this one young man speak after a bit. So, I just wanted to bring that up, and I hope, you know, we sit there and listen to you people talk, and sometimes we think you're overdoing it. So I think you should take into consideration that when the public wants to get a point across, that you should, you should give him the courtesy to sound up. And I'm hoping to see this change in what we're trying to do with our students, and the changing of the schools. I hope it's successful, and I believe we should try it, okay? Otherwise, I have to come back and criticize you. I'm going to cut it short, because it's getting late, you people took too long.
Thank you, Mr. Sierra. Mr. Terry Neff?
Yes, in your talking tonight, I want to reflect, I think mobility is a big problem. I've said this before, that you need to work with the various groups that do Section Eight housing and subsidized housing, and get them to bring that, those moves in the summertime, not during the school year. I think that's equally important to some of these other things. I'm very proud of the fact that you're considering moving the children back from Lindbergh and Charter Oak and River West, back to their home sites, and away from this transportation that just wastes their whole career in high school, as far as I'm concerned. And I know you had to do the thing with River West before, but enough's enough, and I'm glad that they're going back to their home areas. I wanted to mention some things that impacted my life and education, and I'm not going to get through them all tonight, but I'll get them through by next time. When I was at Longfellow Grade School, growing up, we used to go play football out here at Von Steuben, and it seemed like, just a foreign place, it seemed like I was going out of town when I was in fifth, sixth, seventh grade, to get out here to play football. I went to Rolling Acres one time, because that was before we had inner-city tournaments and all that other stuff, and Rolling Acres was in another district. And I went over to play a game, and it was like, again, being out of town, it was like, you know, overwhelming to me. And I can only imagine what it's like for some of these children who don't travel, who don't have cars, when they go to Lindbergh, and they go to Charter Oak, and they go to Richwoods. It's got to be really frightening, and I'm glad you're considering moving those things back. I also remember, as a young student, I had a car, and I had several of my friends who didn't have cars, who happened to be black athletes, and I would take them home after meetings, football meetings, at the coach's house. And one was Henry Ford. And Henry Ford went into the service and served in Vietnam, came back and went to the VFW hall down on Monroe Street for a wedding. And he got in an argument, or another young man got in an argument with him over a chair, I think it had something to do with a girl as well, went to the car and got his gun, and came back and shot Henry dead at age twenty-two. I remember that. That's impactful, when you see somebody or have a friend of yours get killed. That was my first friend who got killed. Another young man, who was a big part of my life and my children's life, was DeMarco Mason. And DeMarco was Marcus Mason's brother, whose mother was bludgeoned, stabbed to death thirty-seven times, or twenty-seven times in a nursing home, lost their father, and then DeMarco, upon graduation, was in a gang, and he was in a part of town other than the north end, got shot and got killed. You know, I gave the eulogy at that particular funeral, and it's really impactful when you see something like that happen. Marcus Mason, his brother, went on to Ball State, was captain of the team, played with Bonzi Wells, who played in the NBA. I think it's very important that you understand, as we move these kids across boundaries, it isn't, if you have not experienced something like that, you need to experience something like that. I was robbed at gunpoint before. I know what it's like. I had a fake Rolex watch taken from me.
Thank you, Ms..
Is there a buzzer? You need to get a buzzer, really, seriously.
Yeah, it was a buzzer.
Well, I didn't hear it.
I just wanted you to finish your sentence.
My hearing's not bad, like Savino.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Cruz, you want to yield your time to him? Is that what you're saying?
On Facebook, I asked manual grads to give their opinions about my comments at the last board meeting. A nineteen seventy-four grad offered these depressing, but all too true, observations. Social programs have removed the males from their homes, in order for the women to receive benefits to raise our children. If men can't go out and get jobs, then how will their children receive the money to sustain their everyday needs? I'm sure if young men could count on good-paying jobs, they would rather feel empowered, knowing they can bring home a decent paycheck, rather than risk the criminal consequences of selling drugs to get the things a single mom can't afford without a government check, with a government check even. It's time to remove the bandages and devise concrete goals to facilitate skills and opportunities to put these young people to work. What are they doing, what they are doing is working, though it may be illegal. So is the alienation these young people are forced to accept when they can't get sustainable salaries to sustain and maintain a family. These observations are reality. The day of good-paying jobs for unskilled labor is gone. After dropping vocational training, the district made the mistake of putting all our hopes on making students college-ready. Many grads go out into the world with few job skills. Our high schools have the obligation of providing our grads with marketable skills, so that they can earn money and go to college at the same time. Without the secretarial skills I learned in District 150, I would never have been able to go to college. At best, many college students have to spread their college education out over more than four years to earn money to live and pay tuition. In two thousand fourteen, the Obama administration, recognizing the need for job training, announced initiatives aimed at better training students for in-demand jobs of the future, at both the high school and college levels. Those jobs were in healthcare, technology, and engineering. A nineteen ninety manual grad offered a suggestion that I believe would be very beneficial to students. He recommended bringing in graduates who have made a good living in ordinary jobs, quite often without a college education. These more realistic motivational speakers might offer hope of job opportunities more within the immediate reach of students. Many students will not make giant leaps, but with gradual steps will find success. Certainly, what we heard about Woodruff, Lincoln, and Harrison tonight, it's a great effort in the right direction. And remember that Hedy Elliott, and the Marine that goes to Harrison, Melvin Birch, are both manual graduates. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of Hedy Elliott?
May I read this? Hedy had an emergency and asked me to read this. It's an announcement?
I'm sure that's okay. Sure. That's good.
She said that the, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. NAACP and Bike Peoria are hosting Jasmine Reese and her dog Fiji. They are on a national bike trip. They will be stopping in Peoria this Saturday at ten-thirty at the NAACP headquarters on MacArthur Highway. Jasmine is not only a cyclist, but a violinist. Please invite all the string students to attend in the district. All are, all are accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Smart? We're on the PTO together, and I didn't realize your last name.
Yeah. Okay. So, I'm just a mom. I'm on the PTO for Glen Oak. I'm kind of outspoken, so, they had their, they had their meeting on Thursday, and I was bombarded Friday morning with a lot of teachers, staff members, saying that Glen Oak is going to go K through eight. So, I have like three pages of notes of the bad, and then one or two comments of what could happen good. So, first I want to start, school capacity. I've talked to the fire marshal and the maintenance guy. Six hundred and fifty students. We're at eight hundred and sixty-eight students right now. How are we going to take two more grade levels in? Every classroom in that school is currently in use and full to capacity. The dangers of having the K through eight matchup, my friend has a kindergartner who is seriously this tall, and there are sixth graders who are seriously this tall. I can't imagine what having a kindergartner and an eighth grader in the hallway together would look like. Whether you guys think that they're not going to pass or not, I, as a mom, would not want my first grader in school with an eighth grader. Adding more staff. Apparently, this was brought on by like budget, cost effectiveness. I'm more concerned with knowing out in the community that there are seventh, eighth grade pregnancies, that they're going to need counseling, there's going to be more nurses, there's going to be more fights in the schools, you're going to need more teachers, you're going to need more hall monitors, you're going to need all that stuff more than what if you, I'm okay with taking the building K four, K five, just definitely not adding more to it. Let's see. Right now, we sit at seven lunch periods. If we add two more grades, we're going to be sitting at nine lunch periods. Our lunches start right now at ten-fifty. The last lunch ends at one-fifty. If we add seventh and eighth grade, we're going to have even more lunch periods. There's only five custodians for the school. You add another two grades, they're going to need more than five custodians for the school. Gym space. For younger kids, it works out fine. They split the gym in half. For older kids, that doesn't work quite the same. Tardies. Starting at seven, eight-thirty in the morning is already hard enough. There is approximately one hundred tardies a week, ranging from any time after eight forty-five to ten-thirty. We're going to start at seven-thirty? We're going to start at 7:30? And, I mean, can you imagine how many more tardies you're going to have? You have people that can't get to school at 8:30, let alone 7:30 is just not going to. And then early dismissal, starting as early as 1:30. You have approximately 10 to 15 a day leaving early. Now, you're going to add seventh and eighth graders who have football, basketball, soccer, whatever else going on, on top of all the sports. I understand the whole sports aspect, but then you have the whole concession stand, more custodians, more cleaning, people running. It just, it seems, the plus and the negative, it just doesn't make sense for Glen Oak to be K through eight.
Thank you. If you didn't finish your comments, please leave them in the comment box.
They're a mess.
Thank you. Carlos Evans? Mr. Evans?
Hey, guys. Really good to see you guys. Thank you for accepting my comments. I'm sorry, I didn't know that that was a rule, so I appreciate you guys accepting my comments at this time. And I respect, I respect leadership. I know it takes a lot to get up there and, you know, and speak to people and make these plans and have everybody say things negative about them, but I respect the the audacity and the forwardness of the plan and everything like that. And I'm speaking today just about Glen Oak. I'm a school social worker, Carlos Evans, and I've been working with our social-emotional, you know, the concerns of our school for the last four years. Really enjoy that, working with Ms. Mayo and our great teachers. The ODRs at Glen Oak, Office Discipline Referrals are ODRs. At Glen Oak, over the last three years, have decreased significantly along with the severity of the infractions. So, less aggressive actions, less theft, less really huge things, more insubordination, disruption, things like that. This year's been a little bit different as a result of high staff turnover, but still looking pretty good. You know, we're still right, right around eighty percent at our tier-one level, which the goal is eighty percent. Our numbers have gotten, as far as population, have gotten up to 900-plus, but not long-term. They haven't sustained at 900 with the mobility, but have been up to 900 around those first couple of months of school. Right now, we're like, she said, 800 or something like that right now. I saw the proposal to reduce it by 100. Schools with K through eight, so our K through eight schools in the district right now have, you know, have struggled with their RTI numbers. Most of them have been below 60% at their tier-one. I know the goal is 80%, and I'm know, I'm sure they're working really hard on improving that, but the challenge is a little bit steeper when you're dealing with K through eight. We have K through six right now, and we've been doing a really good job these last four years at, at bringing our tier-one up to eighty percent or better throughout the school year. So, I think K through six is is good for that. When you look at the schools with population upwards of 800 students, I'm looking at pinpoint data, you see, you notice that the RTI behavior data looked the same. Schools with upward to 800 students, like Glen Oak, like the high schools, have, you know, their tier-one is at about 60, 50%. So, they clearly are struggling with managing students and their social-emotional concerns and them getting along with each other and learning when they have upwards of 800 and you have K through eight. So, that's what I noticed in looking at the data. And all in all, I think we need to get it right with the SEL piece. I know it's a challenge, but we need to get that right, among other challenges, when it comes to having students in schools with upwards of 800 and K through eight, because if we don't, I don't think we're setting, necessarily setting students up for success. So, that's all I really wanted to say, but I appreciate you guys listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Karat, any response to audience?
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to. I wanted to thank our team for coming out and giving us some feedback. We appreciate it, and we're open to feedback. There's some, couple of points. Glen Oak is currently, in terms of enrollment, they're currently at 815 students, so with the proposal, we're proposing that the enrollment would decrease by at least 80 students from, again, 850 to 770. I do realize, I've seen the small cafeteria, and I, I'm like, I've often wondered what that was all about. And I spoke with the principal and talked about a team coming in and an assistant in terms of scheduling lunches and and sort of helping with the plan to either do it simultaneously so that there's an area, that's an area that needs to be improved. It's really interesting, because I've gotten emails from professors from Bradley University talking about the excitement regarding this K eight, you know, the K eight structure, and they've referenced the Brickins Institute and talked about, research shows that a small neighborhood K eight school can avoid the handoff problem of students to a middle school and would help avoid the decline in student achievement, commonly associated with the move to a middle school. So, it really makes sense to keep the kids. This is, and we're looking at what is in the best interest of our kids, and it makes sense to keep our kids and minimize the transition. It has to do with transition. It has to do with opportunities to develop relationship, thus improving growth and achievement. I think one of the things, an overarching theme that I'm hearing from you and actually from our board members, is in terms of devoting resources to buildings. So, that is, that's really where our focus will be. We, we, our board, the board has approved the Office of Social-Emotional. I think that's going to go a long way for us, and we'll have to work together to really make it work. I believe it can work. The good thing for Glen Oak, remember, you will, you will, you will actually keep your, if this is, if this is voted on, you will, your sixth graders will be, your seventh graders, and and so the eighth graders will be staggered. So, you actually, for the upcoming school year, it will be a K through seventh-grade building, and then you will kind of grow your own, then your seventh graders will be your eighth graders. So, those kids shouldn't be foreign to you, and we'll just have to talk about best practices regarding the supports around social-emotional and that sort of thing. With the, with the tardies, it's the expectation, you know, transitioning to that early start. The other buildings are doing it. We have to, you know, we have to start somewhere. And overall, and we've, I can send you the information from Bradley University, they're plotting that move. They're saying District 150 really needs to move, all of the building needs to be K eight and then 912, based on the research. But obviously, that would, that would call for a lot of new buildings. So, it's a good start, and we just have to sort of put our heads together and, as Ms. Wolf-Meyer said earlier, find the glitches and come up with solutions. We have to be solution-oriented and just focus on, again, finding solutions to move forward, but it will make it happen. Collaboratively, we can make it happen. It will happen. We can make it happen. And it's, it's a good thing, because these are your kids, right? I mean, why do we want to send them off? It did, it actually, it was a hassle sending them to Lincoln, because they kept going back and forth. We know that, you know that.
And I just want to say, I understand the concern you have as far as having little kids with the older kids, but I also hear from a lot of parents that they like the idea of their child starting in a school and going all the way through eighth grade, because the staff gets to know them and the family, it becomes familiar. If it works right, the older kids can mentor the younger kids, and I think that is another thing that is really good. A lot of parents don't want their kids, this way they have all their children in one school. They don't have to have them in two different schools as the split. So, there's pros and cons both ways, and I think it's like Dr. Karat said, we have to keep an eye on it and make sure where the problems are, that we can address them. So, I appreciate your comments, and I understand your concerns, I totally do, but there are some good things that could possibly come out of this. We just have to make sure that it's the good things that happen and not the bad, so. And we're going to have to rely on, on staff and parents to let us know if it's not working.
And I had a sigh of relief when I reread it and, and I, Dr. Karat, know I was raising all kinds of sand about it, but the fact that these kids, the sixth graders, are now going to be the seventh graders, and you have a whole year there, I mean, it's the same kids and they all know each other. That, that really relieved my, my concerns right there. And so, I like the idea of having them stay together. I think some parents really made their decision on whether the child is going to stay there based on this, this idea.
And it's how they're scheduled also. I mean, the, the K four and then the 5'8" separating them, that's probably she has a question.
I don't know if I'm allowed to or not, but you brought it up Thursday, was, again, how do you run a junior high within the grade school? And I think you mentioned Susan Gersnich.
Right.
And I don't know if she knows who I am from Franklin days and when it was Edison, but, again, are you going to have the hourly transition or a homeroom type situation? So, you cut down that hallway interaction where the kids might run into each other, where you have kindergarten and eighth grade, you know? I don't always look where they're going.
Right. We're willing to assist. Your principal would, would definitely.
Basically, up to the.
Willing to assist regarding scheduling. We did talk about that on Thursday, and we would be happy to assist with that. Thank you.
And that's a big concern for us, is just how are we going to run two different systems in one, one building?
Just keep talking.
I, I think that the K through, one thing about the K through eight is that parents don't have kids in three different schools normally. All their kids are in one school. Coming through K through eight, when I was in school in District 150, it was, all the schools were K through eight, except Roosevelt, that was six, it was seven, eight, nine. But all the schools were K through eight. So, your siblings are all together in one school, so parents didn't have to run around picking kids up and going in different directions and come to school at different times. So, I've, I've gotten a lot of calls, but they've been plus, because parents see a plus in having their kids all in one school, when there are three kids and all, they're three different schools they're going to. So, it's something we'll have to work through, think about, and, and like everybody said, if there's some issues or concerns, we'll deal with them as they happen.
Yeah, there's some, it says, you know, as your attention turns to elementary buildings and their great configurations, we should avail ourselves of the opportunity to return to K eight schools, and that's from a researcher at Bradley University, where students can stay in their neighborhood, neighborhoods from K through eight and avoid the negative effects of transition from K four school to a separate grade-five school. And then they reference the Brickins Institute published a report in 2011 that reviews the latest research that shows that moving to K eight schools can substantially improve student performance compared with the separate middle school model, and it goes on and on and on. But, you know, the devil is in the details, and that's where we have to put forth a true effort to do what's right for our kids. And to the best of our ability, we're going to provide the support necessary to make it happen.
And someone asked, was it you that said why the cafeteria was so small?
Yeah.
Well, when we built the school, we built it for K four. And then there was a problem with all these kids not having anywhere to go for 5'8", and they would kind of, we actually used some of the areas that were supposed to be community areas and that to put kids in. So, I mean, it's, it'd take, we have to relook at the configuration of the school. We spent $27 million to build the school the way, the way it was planned to be, so it.
And it has a lot of space. Glen Oak has 126 square, in terms of the square footage.
So, maybe we need to look at the configuration.
Right. And maybe, yeah, there seems like there's room for, there's a lot of space, but maybe not necessarily classroom space, but there's space.
Ms. Costa.
I have a, I'm a product of a K through eight back in this, in the, whoa, 50s. And, of course, you know, the, the dynamics of, of our children has changed. I do agree, I understand exactly, you know, what you're saying in regards to a kindergartner and an eighth grader. Possibly something that we may be able to look at is not, not transitioning that K through four from one classroom to another, and they stay in their classroom. And then that fifth and, fifth through eighth can transition from classroom to classroom. What's, what's, what's going on now? Are they, are the, what are they doing?
They have SRA in the morning, so different kids go to different classes, and they have SEAL in the afternoon, so different players are going to different classes.
So, maybe, maybe that is something that we can.
You know, theater class and art class and video class.
As a staff and as a team.
Yeah, maybe that's something that can be looked at, whereas they, you know, they don't move, and they stay in their classroom.
Because even in the, in the mornings or in the afternoons, when like, because kindergarten in first grade is in the cafeteria to get their breakfast in the morning, and some of the older grades are behind us. So, if our kindergarten, first grade class are coming out of cafeteria and the older kids are in the hallway, I mean, even that is just enough of a chaotic mess, where it's just like, I can't even imagine having two more grades to have.
But that, that all can be changed. I mean, the kids don't have to, I mean, that all can be worked out.
Are you still allowing? I think I can make it a conclusion, if you would like.
Okay.
But I would like to point out how hard the Glen Oak staff has worked to get their building to where it is, walk in there. It's quiet, logistics are fantastic, people are in the classrooms, learning. First year, I became union president three years ago. It's one of the few schools I know of that made AYP. And, and one of the big concerns is they want to preserve what they have created, and I think that's a, a big part of the concern. And my hope, you know, with the social worker here who presented you with all this data, that would be a perfect person to start working with as a core group, you know, however this moves forward. But I wanted to throw that out there and give them some kudos, not only for the fantastic work they've done, but for showing up tonight to speak up for their school.
Thank you. That was it. All right. Can we do the presidency? Okay. It's a response. Information items. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests.
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting, we received two requests. Of these requests, one was filled. Under the pending category, there are no pending requests. To date, we've received seven requests for this calendar year for a cost of $6,184.14.
Thank you. Proposed expenditures, over $2,500. Any questions of Mr. Bush or comments, Mr. Bush?
Thank you, President Ross. Having reviewed the list, I do not see anything out of the ordinary, but I am open to questions, should the board have any.
I'm sorry.
It's all good, unless there's any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bush? Comments? Okay. All right. The consent agenda.
Tonight's consent agenda. Item number one, gifts to the school district. This meeting, $578. Year-to-date, $69,363.19. The proposed action is that the following donations be accepted in letters of appreciation sent to the donors. Two boxes of candy bars valued at $25 by Nick Gober to Thomas Jefferson School. Walmart and Visa gift cards valued at $50 by Nick Gober to Thomas Jefferson School. Haircut gift cards valued at $52 by Kwame Lobdel to Thomas Jefferson School. Two bikes valued at $125 by Nick Gober to Thomas Jefferson School. Cash donation valued at $50 by Mrs. Deanna Ajoda to Washington Gifted Laredo Taft Field Trip. Cash donation valued at $100 by Mr. Gregory Gebharts to Harrison K Community Learning Center. Museum tickets valued at $176 by Erica Wright to District 150 students. Item number two, the payment of bills. Item number three, human resources report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item five, field trip approval, Manuel Academy, Des Moines, Iowa. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Manuel Academy RoboRams per Board Policy 6:240. Students will travel to U.S. Cellular Center in Des Moines, Iowa on March 16th, 2016, and return on March 19th, 2016, to participate in the 2016 Illinois FTC North Super Regional Tournament. Travel expenses will be paid by Caterpillar Funds. Congrats, RoboRams, and also thank you, Caterpillar. Item number six, field trip approval, Washington Gifted Laredo Taft Field School Contact, Tract. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the Laredo Taft Field School 2017 contract for eighth-grade students attending Washington Gifted School. Laredo Taft is an outdoor educational program sponsored by Northern Illinois University. All eighth-grade students will be attending the five-day trip, March 27th through 31st, 2017, at a cost of $300 per student. Activities will include water. Activities will include water study, team building, forest ecology, pioneering, Native Americans, birds, mammals, weather, astronomy, night hikes, campfire, geology, survival and crafts. All expenses are covered through Washington Activity Fund Laredo Taft Field School. Parents pay the fee for students to attend, but no child is denied attendance due to the fees. Item number seven, Camp Invention Project. Proposed action, that the Board of Education enter in an agreement to partner with Camp Invention to provide a summer enrichment program that will reinforce the traditional school year with science, technology, engineering, and math STEM activities through inquiry-based hands-on activities. Camp Invention provides materials and teacher training. The camp will serve thirty-five students entering fourth grade at a total cost of four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, funded by Perfect. Teacher salaries will come from Title I Summer School Money. Item number eight, the Fine Arts Supervisor at Peoria High School Memorandum of Understanding. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve a memorandum of understanding with the Peoria Federation of Teachers, IFT, AFT, AFL-CIO, Local Number seven eighty. The Fine Arts Supervisor at Peoria High School shall receive extra assignment pay of four percent of the base amount of the salary schedule, Step One BA funded through the Ed Fund. And item number nine, the Reconfiguration Plan, Valeska Hinton Early Childhood Education Center. The proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the reconfiguration of Valeska Hinton Early Childhood Center from a pre-K to first grade facility to an entirely pre-K facility effective at the start of the FY seventeen school year. And Madam President, that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Adler, could I have a motion, please? A second. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on any of the items, or is there any item that I should have asked? Is there any item? Any board member want to pull for separate vote? Okay.
I have a question. On the Camp Invention Project, how are those fourth graders chosen, the thirty-five that get to go?
What we, what we discussed was sending a notification out to the buildings and selecting two from each.
Oh, okay.
Two, so it's equally, there's equal representation. Yeah, great question, thanks.
Other questions on the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, will you call a roll?
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Item number ten, under deliberation items, Superintendent Employment Contract. Rose's action is that the Board of Education approve Superintendent Employment Contract for Dr. Sharon Demloth Karat. I have a motion of second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item number eleven, suspension review.
Proposed action is that the suspension review listed on the report dated February twenty-second, twenty sixteen, be approved as presented.
Any discussion? Would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Item twelve is expulsions. The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated February twenty-second, twenty sixteen, be approved as amended.
Second.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Item thirteen, expulsion with the expulsion to be held in abeyance. The proposed action is that expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated February twenty-second, twenty sixteen, be approved as amended.
Second.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Item fourteen, is revocation of expulsion held in abeyance. The proposed action is that the revocation of expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report February twenty-second, twenty sixteen, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Item fifteen, revocation of board probation. The proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated February twenty-second, twenty sixteen, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Presentation and suggestions by board members.
Mrs. Ross? Yes, ma'am. I know that we have a lot on our plate. I know that we don't have money, but there's, there's something that I'd like to suggest and ask that we give a lot of thought to. And I think that there's an important issue that we have not really talked about or put a lot of thought into it, and that's the recruitment of minority teachers. And so I would like to have a conversation on how we do that, and what I'd like for us to look at is putting together a committee, a base of the board, teachers, principals, and community people to come up with suggestions. I believe that recruitment is done better face-to-face. What that means is traveling. It's what this board did some years ago, when they brought about ten people from Lane Teachers College. They're all retired now, that group that came in then. But in bringing in our stakeholders, who also want the same thing to happen, and I know that we have people in this community and companies in this community that's willing to assist us in a lot of ways, that's what they told us at least, even financially, so that we can visit HBCUs and those colleges that have large numbers. And I, I would like for us to put that back on our plate and ask you, President Ross, to pull together a committee of people from the community and the school district and the board to talk about how to do that. I think it's important to our kids. I think it's important to the school district. So I would suggest that we, we move forward and ask the community leaders and those stakeholders that said that we're doing an outstanding job, that said they're willing to help in any way, and ask them to put their money where their mouth is, and assist us in getting the finances to, to do face-to-face recruiting so that we can recruit minority teachers. I know that everyone says, you know, it's really hard, and there's, there's not much in Peoria to do. I'm sorry, there is a lot to do in Peoria. And if, because they're working all week, so you can't do much on the week. And on the weekends, you know, Chicago's two and a half hours away, and St. Louis is three hours away. So we need to really concentrate on that, and let's not talk about it anymore. Let's do that. And so my suggestion is to form that committee and let us come with options on how we begin to really recruit minority teachers for this district.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I think maybe we get a consensus of the board members that are here, whether we should, you know, I could sit down with Dr. Karat and discuss this and try and put together something. Ms. Wolfmeyer, would you be okay with that? And you are, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Kostick, Mr. Adler?
Yes.
And I'm okay with that as well. Would you leave it to us to try to put to, you know, get some of the right people on board?
Absolutely.
We actually do have a plan, and we have a group of staff members that are out recruiting right now, but we would love to have feedback and get some support, some additional support from, from the, from the board.
Yeah, and I, I'd just like to make sure we get the assistance from.
The right people go to.
From the community. And let them be part of that process.
Okay. Report, report from board committees?
Oh, that's me.
Okay.
The, the parent committee, advisory committee met last Thursday, and I think we have an outstanding group of people. We are now working and coming up with some ideas of how we include, we work with parents to get them more included in, in their schools and with their children and, and what's going on with their children. So there, a committee's been formed, and that committee's bringing back some ideas or even incentives that we can work to do with parents, because there are a lot of incentives that don't cost anything. So we'll bring that back to you on, on, after our next meeting. But there have been a lot of good suggestions, and, and so we're going to move forward and hopefully to work to get our parents really involved in our schools.
Okay. Any other board committees report?
The Buildings Committee met last week, and largely to, to discuss two items. The first was the, I guess.
Construction bonds.
Yeah, the, the construction bonds and our lack of getting them. Mr. Bush has planned to, and, and the rest of the team has planned to, to look for some more funding, but unfortunately, we were not successful in our endeavor to get some of that Recovery Act funding. And the other thing, we spent a fair amount of time talking about, is the combined sewer overflow issue, and how that impacts, you know, our, our capital expenses and, and plans going forward. So I think it was a good discussion, we didn't have a lot of large takeaways.
Thank you. No other committee reports, so entertain a motion?
So moved.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Kostick. Thank you, Madam President.